All right, perfect. All right, welcome to the Tewksbury Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, May 11th, 2021. Let's jump right into the schedule items agenda. The first agenda item is Verizon Cable Television License Renewal. And just for the residents and for some of our newer board members, what we did is we met back in, I believe it was November 2020, we provided our feedback to the folks at Verizon. And this is, if you would, the final product, if you would, that we're going to potentially review tonight and discuss, and then ultimately take a yea or nay vote. Because this is a public hearing, I'll be official for this one here. I was recommended to be official, so let's be official. So what I'll do is I'll read the public hearing. So, good evening, welcome to Town of Tewksbury's Public Hearing on Verizon's Cable Licensing Renewal. I'm J. K., the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, which is the Cable Licensing Issue Authority under Massachusetts law. With me tonight are the select board members, as well as the Town Council, Bill August. Thank you, Bill, for joining. This notice hearing was in the local newspapers for two consecutive weeks. Copies of the legal advertisement I hear entered into the record, ascertainment hearing Exhibits One and Two. By way of background for the public, state law requires holding of a public hearing prior to the final action, which is tonight, for a proposed renewal license, which shall include the opportunity for public comment on the town cable's needs and their proposed renewal license. Based on the information before us this evening, and based on prior public testimony and prior public hearing, including the recommendations of the town has received, the select board may take final action on renewed proposal before us this evening. Any public comments, as well as questions, should be directed through the chair, and I will rule whether they are in order. Please keep your comments no longer than four minutes. This is, let's begin with the public hearing. But first, I'd like to introduce Mr. Verizon's representative, Mr. John Harrington. John, thank you for joining us. And in what I like to do, with no further ado, why don't we proceed with the public hearing? So what we'll do is, we'll hear from Mr. Harrington, and potentially Mr. August. We'll socialize with the board, and like we always do, we'll open it up to the public for the hearing. So the floor is yours, Mr. Harrington.
Mr. John?
I thought, I saw John on here. Yeah, he's actually, yeah, I'll take care of that. Okay, John. Mr. Harrington?
Yep. Can you hear me?
Perfect.
You can hear me now.
Yeah, very good, John. You're perfect.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for this opportunity. Correctly stated, we started negotiations several months ago in anticipation of this renewal. And as most consumers of cable TV know, there's been a tremendous change in cable television with streaming services, added competition, and it's reflected in the agreement that's before you tonight. Verizon has determined that, given the dynamic changes in cable television, they wanted a reduced term on the renewal, which was five years. And noting that that is an added hardship in negotiations, because these are time-consuming negotiations, there is a reflection in the financial support that Verizon is paying that reflects that consideration. Additionally, Verizon is offering a high-definition PEG channel, in addition to the three standard definition PEG channels that you will have. And I would say that, you know, given everything that's going on in the industry, this is a very fair agreement, and I appreciate the contributions made by the town in negotiating what was a fair agreement to both sides.
Mr. August, anything to add?
Thank you. Good evening. I would add about the, first, I want to thank John Harrington, the Verizon representative who just spoke. He was a good negotiation partner to the town, very responsive in terms of the back and forth, and meeting us halfway, and generating, what I know from experience doing this, representing municipalities and multiple cable renewals, I'm confident that this is a very good license, comparatively speaking, relative to other communities and the particulars of the Tewksbury franchise. I would like to comment specifically about the mention of a reduced term to five years. That is nothing unique to Tewksbury. We were informed by Verizon that it has not agreed to a license term longer than five years in a single Massachusetts community anywhere or elsewhere. And then that is a corporate maximum, and they can't get beyond it. We wanted it to be longer, because frankly, it's a hassle to have to go through this. And Verizon did represent to us that for several years. John Harrington, how far does it go back that you have not gone longer than a five-year license?
It's at least three years, possibly four. And it's in every jurisdiction that we have a cable franchise. And additionally, in other jurisdictions, there is a right of unilateral termination, which is not something that we have in Massachusetts.
All right. So I just don't want anyone to hear, shorter term equals five years, and wonder if we're getting shorter than other communities. We're not. John Harrington also mentioned that, in light of the shorter term, it was, you know, there was some consideration of that reflected in the financial aspects of the renewal document. And I just want to make, to clarify, to amplify on that, the consideration was not to get less in finances, but to get more in finances. Because our position was, and I have to thank the town manager for pursuing this, Richard Montori, because from day one, when he heard about the five-year license, and that's a significant change historically, from what used to exist 10 years ago and five years ago, he said, we have to get something back in return for that, because that is a hassle to us. And so the way it was reflected financially, to be specific, is Verizon agreed to a more generous financial package than Comcast has been providing in terms of the equipment and facility capital funding. There are two main buckets of funding. There's the capital and equipment package, which are called the, you know, the capital grants for long-term assets like equipment and facilities. And that's in Section 5.3 of the license. And just to go from the general to the particular, following up on the town manager's emphasis on getting financial consideration for a shorter term, above and beyond the annual payments, this is in addition, in addition to the, they matched Comcast in the annual payments. Comcast pays exactly 3.5% of its gross revenues per year to the town for PEG access funding, has to be cable-related funding. Verizon exactly matched that. But when it comes to not the annual funding, but the equipment capital funding, Comcast pays out about $20,000 a year in capital, and Verizon agreed to $150,000 in capital funding in Section 5.3.1 for a five-year license, paid out in the first three years at $50,000 a year. So when you divide the $150,000 by the five-year license term, their average annual capital payment is $30,000 a year. That's approximately 50% more per year than the Comcast $20,000. Just to be, you know, very exact, the Comcast capital payments are not expressed in dollar amounts. They pay a quarter of percent per year of their gross revenues in capital, and that yields about $20,000. It could go down a little, it could go up a little, depending on what their revenues are per year. It's trending down with Comcast, because they're losing subscribers to cord-cutting. But the Verizon payment is not a percentage, so it can't trend down. It's a fixed dollar amount, $50,000 each year for the first three years. So it's a superior package compared to Comcast, in consideration of the short term.
All right, very good.
I have other things that we've reviewed previously. I want to add for the public, procedurally, it was not only Chairman Kelly, the November 2020, we had a detailed briefing of all these things before the selectmen and public sessions, so everything must be transparent. That's a priority, for everything to be transparent. It was all spelled out, and all these documents are also, you know, in the office of the town clerk. But in addition to that, we did have another public hearing, even before the November 2019, 2020. We had another public hearing previously in November 2019. So there were really three such sessions, and a lot of public process.
Very good. Okay, at this point, Mr. August, what I'd like to do is open it up to the board for questions. And let's start it to tippity-top, in no random order. I did pick out of a hat, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I obviously was not a participant in some of the negotiation conversation as a selectman that was re-elected a few weeks back. But having read the document and listening to some of the comments this evening, I certainly will take my cue from my colleagues who did participate. But I have had the benefit of going through this process once or twice before. And my observations would be that it is a changing marketplace, and we need to obviously consider that in the business deal that is struck. If council is recommending it, and town manager is recommending it, I certainly would be supportive. I saw nothing that was concerning to me. So I don't have any questions, but I'd be interested in hearing any observations or comment from my three colleagues who did participate in the hearings, and in any other deliberations as this process unfolded. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. How about Ms. Dronik?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do not have any questions. I, to your point, Mr. Johnson, I was very well informed in that November meeting that we had. I thought it was incredibly detailed, and I think that we focused a lot on the five years and the declining revenue. I am certainly happy that we are able to strike this deal with Verizon to continue the work that we're doing with this funding source, which is the great work that we're doing with our public access TV, and the great work of Brian Dorrington and his team. And I want to thank the town manager and all the people who put in the extraordinary amount of time. As you just heard, there have been several meetings in that this process has spanned a couple of years. So I'm really appreciative to get it across the finish line. And I thought that the packet itself was incredibly detailed, and I just am happy to see us in a good position. And thank you. So I have no questions.
We'll let Mr. August off easy. All right, how about Ms. Wellman?
Thank you so much. I would echo what my colleagues have already said on a few matters, but I do have a couple of quick questions. With regard to Section 3.4 Cable Service to Public Buildings, our Exhibit A is quite long. And I'm curious about the impact of the FCC rule that's going to impact here. So, Bill, I think you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, that's a great question.
This is like $4,400 per drop that's going to count against our 5% cap. And I know that our PEG support is at 3.5%. So I'm curious about that extra 1.5%. And what consideration, if you can kind of tell me a little bit more about the math, because we don't go to that 5%, so I want to have a better...
Right. That's a great question, because that's an example of something that is brand-new. It did not, that FCC, the new regulation that Selectman Wellman is referring to, adopted by the FCC about a year and a half ago, it's brand-new, it's being implemented now for the first, Comcast is just starting to implement it. They're figuring it out. And Verizon has not actually implemented it yet, but is in the process of notifying towns that it must implement it. What it says is that things that used to, it says that the federal law has a ceiling on the annual payments, the franchise fee. The franchise fee cannot be greater than 5% of gross revenues a year, because that says that right in the Cable Act. That was the grand bargain of the Cable Act. The cities and towns can negotiate a fee and certain things, but they can't go above 5%. It was a very balanced approach. So, but the FCC woke up one day in 2018, 2019, and said, well, what about those courtesy accounts going to the schools and municipal buildings on that Exhibit A that selectwoman Wellman is referring to? If towns are requiring complimentary service, shouldn't, isn't that a benefit to the town, and shouldn't it count towards the franchise fee cap? So, the answer to your, and the FCC said it must. That's very controversial. Municipalities are challenging it in court. They're petitioning the FCC to reconsider and amend it, to not count this stuff, because it hadn't been counted towards the franchise fee cap for decades, and now it's being counted. So, it only kicks in if the value of the, what they call an in-kind benefit, non-monetary benefit, such as complimentary service to a school, or the operational costs of an institutional network. It only kicks in if the value of those benefits, those extras, bring you over 5%. But you really don't appear to be at risk of hitting that 5% cap, so it should have no impact, because Verizon has to just match Comcast. Comcast is at 3.5%. They're not at 5%. So I've never heard of the complimentary service to municipal buildings equalling a full 1.5% of gross revenues. It should always be under that. I can't guarantee that. The first thing they teach you in law school, don't guarantee anything. That's, it seems that way. We've never heard, in every negotiation we've had with every company, the companies have assured us that the valuation of the service to schools and municipal buildings doesn't really hit that 1.5% level. So you should have a safe harbor there. If you ever hit that 5%, they would have to give you notice before they started offsetting it against the 5%. Then you could look at that list. As it turns out, in most communities that have evaluated their Verizon Exhibit A, Comcast is already serving many of those buildings. So you could whittle down the list, you know, significantly, because you don't need all the buildings to have an obligation to receive service from two companies. It's redundant. So it looks like you're okay on that one. It was a great question, because the selectmen should be aware of it. It's a change in the law, just like the five-year term is a change in the landscape. This is another change in the landscape.
I concur. The only other question I had, this will be a little quicker.
Sorry for the long-winded answers.
I asked the questions. Exhibit B has our PEG access channels, but our HD channel is not reflected there. So is that, I understand it was going to be a fourth channel versus...
Right. That's reflected in Section 5. That's not currently provided. This is, this is a great point to emphasize about this renewal license. The existing Verizon license does not provide for any high-definition PEG access channel. They're all standard, three standard. This license is a big step forward. And John Harrington mentioned that in his introductory comment. This license provides for the three, continuing the three existing PEG channels, plus, at the request of the town. So this is something the town has to do, if it wants it. And I know that telemedia does want it. They have to do a written request to Verizon, and then Verizon will add a fourth PEG channel. So this is something new, and it'd be above and beyond what you've had in the past. That fourth channel will be an HD PEG channel. It can be used either at the discretion, at the town's choice, the option of the town, for simulcasting in existing PEG channel, so that people can see it in HD, or for original programming as a new fourth, qualitatively different programming. So that, I'm glad you asked a great question. It's a new thing, and that's in Section 5.1 of the license, even though it's not in Exhibit B.
Yeah. I appreciate all the time. That's good. I appreciate all the time that you and staff have put into the negotiations. I do know that they go back and forth quite a bit, and it's time-consuming. And Mr. Harrington, I also appreciate your contributions to this effort, and for us to bring an equitable agreement to our community. Thank you.
And I just want to say, we appreciate Jane Wellman's time, because she provided us with some detailed emails, you know, to make sure we were including that HD channel in your memo, as well as seeking other things which we have reflected in this document, but, you know, that we went over at the last meeting.
There's a lot. There's a lot here. It's a, it's a good step forward, even though I would prefer the 10-year term, personally. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good. How about Mr. Mackey?
Mr. Chairman, my only question was regarding the HD PEG channel, and that's been asked and answered. So I just want to commend everyone involved in these negotiations. It looks like a great deal. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay, very good. I'll be short and sweet. I always say, Mr. August, I'm happy to have you. You almost have to be a lawyer to read this document. I mean, it is deep. So I call Mr. August the GOAT of cable negotiations. I know you've been doing it for years and years and years and years. So, and of course, we're privileged, you know, being on the board, seeing all the communication and what goes into this. I can also say, I was very happy with the community, and Mr. Dorrington, he's on here, he's our telecommunications leader, with all the different feedback they provided. I know you are very, most communities don't take it to this level. So just for the residents, we took it very seriously. And like I said, we're happy to have you on your side, but this is some confusing stuff, mister, and especially when we get the pamphlet that's that long. So, you know, I thank you. I think it is a good deal for residents. And that's really just, I wanted to provide those comments. So again, thank you. Thank you all. All right. Any other additional comments from the board? Okay, at this point, I'd like to do is, remember, it's a public hearing, so for this particular entity here, for the Cable Television License Renewal, Mr. Dorrington, do we have anyone on the line?
We have no callers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And I always know what's the delay, so why don't we proceed? And if we have a caller, a resident for this, we'll certainly bump them up. So with that being said, I look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Will it be, this is a procedural question. Are you planning to then have a vote on, after the close, on the, on the approval of the document?
Correct.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
You do, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And because this is a virtual meeting, we need to do a roll call vote. So, Mr. Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Dronik?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, the public hearing is closed. Now let's turn it over to the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, Ms. Well, I was going to say, Ms. Wellman, do we have to take this up in, maybe I'll defer to Mr. Montori. Do we have to take this up in two entities, or is one vote official?
I believe one vote is going to be fine.
Even better. I'm sorry, Ms. Wellman.
I was just going to make a motion to approve adoption, acceptance of the 2021 Cable Television Renewal Agreement with Verizon.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? A second by Ms. Dronik? Mr. Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Dronik?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Harrington and Mr. August. Thank you. Job well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want, I just want to get in two more thank-yous, because I thank Richard profusely, who was like the best to work with. Brian Dorrington and Janine, you know, they just could not have been more helpful. Every phone call, every request for a copy, they're great. Thanks.
Great call. Thank you. See you in five years.
All right.
Good night. That brings us, brings us to the 7:15 schedule items. So this is a transfer Class II license application for AK Motors and Auto Repair.
Yeah, hi.
Okay, just one second. Okay. Because this is a public hearing as well, yeah, I'm looking, yes, this is a public hearing. Do I have a motion to not read the public notice?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second. Roll call vote. Mr. Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Dronik?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Okay, so what we'll do, again, what we'll do is, we'll listen to the applicants. We'll discuss it amongst the board. We'll open it up as a public hearing. We'll close out the public hearing, and we'll revisit it with the board. So with that being said, do we have representation for, do we have the applicant or applicants?
Yes, we have the applicant, AK Motors and Auto Repair. I'm Daniel Kalender, their attorney, and we have Selma Saraf, the owner of the property, and the applicant to receive the transfer of the license under Chapter 140, Section 58, Class II license.
Okay, the floor is yours. Maybe just want to, again, just for us and for the residents, explain what the, what's your application all about, and what you're looking for through this board?
Presently, there, the license exists at 818 Main Street for the sale of second-hand Class II automobiles. The applicant owns the building and intends to, hopes to occupy the premises across the street as of July 1, and have a license transferred from the present occupant that is operating there to themselves to operate and sell second-hand automobiles.
Okay, if there's no further, what we can do is open up the board for questions. So let's, Mr. Johnson, do you want to kick us off for questions to the applicant?
Just for clarity's sake, I think I understand what's happening, but I want to just confirm for the benefit of the public, this is effectively a friendly transaction, if I understand, Counselor, your commentary, right? This is a family license that's being transferred to or within the same relationship?
Well, it's not a family transaction. However, my clients own the building, and the tenant presently operates there and is the holder of the license. And the tenant will be leaving as of July 1, and my client will intend to go in there to, and use the license if permitted by the board, the Class II license to sell automobiles in the same spot where the current tenant is operating.
Understood. Can you tell me who the current license holder is?
The current license holder is Leandro Diaz or Diaz. This is Advanced Auto Sales.
I got it. I got it. That's what I thought from the documentation. Okay. All right. And I'm gonna state straight out, I, I've had my automobiles repaired by Mr. Saraf and his team over there and I know they are a quality organization. So I'm happy to see that they're staying in town and they're potentially expanding their operations. So a good thing.
Thank you.
How about Ms. Tronik?
Thank you. Now I know where to go and get my car repaired. Thank you for that. Mr. Johnson, I think that's wonderful. I just want to note that I appreciated all the paperwork being in order and the one thing that I always like to put out for residents is that all of the department heads have reviewed this. And the only one that I don't see on here is the building department. I'm assuming that there's no issue with that. And that is through the, to you, Mr. Chairman, to the town manager. I know that community development did it, but not the building department.
Yes, everything should be, everything should be in order with the building department.
Okay. And I have no questions and I thank you. And I too am glad to see that you're able to transfer this in a way that you're able to continue operation. So, thank you.
Very good. How about Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any further questions. Your paperwork is in good order, as stated, and answers all of my questions. Your family has an excellent reputation in the community. You're often recommended by people I know and online. So it's wonderful to see that you are being able to expand your business and you're staying here in town. And we welcome this change. Thank you. Or I welcome this change.
Thank you.
Very good. How about Mr. Mackey?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have one question. There was mention of moving across the street when we were getting that in brief there. I was wondering if we get some clarification on that?
Well, presently, in addition to owning the building across the street, the Sarafs operate the BP gas station.
Perfect. Understood.
So essentially, they do auto repair at the BP gas station on a daily basis. And the intent would be to not only, in the location across the street at 818 Main Street, assuming the license is granted to sell the automobile to repairs in the spot across the street as well.
Perfect. Thank you for the clarification. No further questions and I'm happy to see that your business is doing well and you guys are expanding.
Thank you.
Very good. Yeah, I don't have much on my side. I think you, do you have the two bays or was it one on 818, the two bays?
Yes.
Yes.
Correct, okay. Yep. And like all my colleagues said, everything was in line. So what I'm gonna do is just to make this speedy. Mr. Dorrington, do we have any, do we have any abuddies or any residents on the line for this particular line item, this schedule item?
We have no callers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I think we know the deal. If we do get a caller, because there's roughly about a minute lag, we'll entertain that caller. So with that being said, I look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mackey. Mr. Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronik?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. Very good. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification. We just voted to close the hearing. Are we gonna now vote on the license itself?
Right. Yeah, yeah.
It's early too, it's early. Okay, thank you. What is the pleasure of the board for the license, on behalf of the license?
In that vein, Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion to approve the transfer as requested.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay, roll call vote. Mr. Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronik?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. Now I can say congratulations and thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Good deal.
Good luck.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next order of business, let me just jump back to the agenda quickly, is 7:20, is the entertainment license for Wamerset Lanes, 434 Main Street. This is a public hearing. I think we're gonna do the same thing. What we'll do is we'll open up the public hearing, we'll listen to the applicant, we'll kick it around with the board, we'll open it up for residents. We'll close with the public hearing. Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I'm looking at Mr. Diaz on the screen and he looks frustrated. And we didn't offer him an opportunity to speak during that hearing. And so I'm wondering if we should, he seems frustrated. I'm sorry to interrupt you as we go on to the next item.
Mister, I can't see, so thanks for the call. It's Mr. Diaz and he was associated with the license transfer, the previous item, right, Mr. Diaz?
Yep. He can't hear you. I don't know if he's muted.
Please hold. Mr. Diaz, was he on camera, Ms. Wellman?
He's on camera, yeah, he's on camera, but his hand is. Yeah, his hand is up on the, you know, the hand up function, but we don't see, is he muted? Can we unmute him?
He's not muted.
Oh, so then he's muted on his end.
Mr. Diaz?
Perhaps we can post the phone number and he can call us on a telephone? The call in number is 978. It's on the screen, Mr. Diaz, 978-771-0819. He's writing it down, Mr. Chairman. He's calling in, Mr. Chairman?
Yep, I get him now.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we have him on the line.
Mr. Diaz, first off, I apologize. Yeah, we can hear you, Mr. Diaz, I apologize. So thanks for my colleague for pointing it out. So go ahead, Mr. Diaz.
So I just want to speak because like right now I own the license, so I feel the license is on my name. We come with agreement with the family, I'll be transferring over the license. But just to let you know, I'm just gonna leave the place on June 30. I'll be operating until June 30. So I bought a place down in Cricket and I'm just finishing the building that way and moving up to Cricket. So I just want to make sure the license can continue under my name until June 30.
June, I'm sorry, June 30th, is that 3-0, June 30th?
Yeah, June 30th, yeah. So until March, July 1st, that's the day that they're gonna take possession of the place.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's in the paperwork. Okay, Mr. Montori, is that, is that, are we good there based on approval for this evening?
Yeah, we'll make sure that's all, sir.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Diaz? Again, thank you, I apologize, I did not recognize you. Anything else, Mr. Diaz on your side?
No, that'll be all. It's just, thank you very much and thank you, you guys all, like for all those years in Tuxbury.
Thank you.
And I can see it was much easier this time for the, to take place. Like because the time when I was coming in to take a place was somebody else there who destroyed the place. It was so hard for me to get the license. And I think we're gonna take care of those all seven years and pass it over to them. Like with no issues that way, they can move forward.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being a part of our community for seven. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thanks again, Ms. Wellman, for calling out. I can't see the screen, so perfect, okay. All right, why don't we move to a 7:20 appointment, entertainment license again for Wamerset Lanes, 343 Main Street. So this is a public hearing. Do I have a motion to waive the reading of the public notice?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Mackey, do I have a second?
Second, aye.
Second by Mr. Johnson, roll call vote, Mr. Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronik?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Okay, so let's begin. I do, I do believe Mr. McLaren's on. So why don't we do this? Because, and just for a little bit of history for the board, typically, Mr. McLaren would come in for all different special occasions. I call them onesie twosies. So it was the request of the board to say, Mr. McLaren, if you know that you're doing particular items or you're having particular events, try to do your best to come in so we can hear all these events, you know, and maybe just vote, you know, all the events at once as opposed to doing, having Mr. McLaren come in every other week. So I think he's done that. He's outlined what he's looking for. So this might be a little bit confusing because we're gonna talk about a lot of things, a lot of different events. So let's just be patient as a board, you know, and let's ask all the right questions. And again, we will open it up to the abuddies because we did get, we received several notices from abuddies with concern. So we'll be prepared for that as well. So, Mr. McLaren, why don't you open it up and just maybe at a very high level, explain what you're looking for and explain through your application and we'll just go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think we're, you know, due to COVID, we're at a different length of our business here to push for entertainment. It's that time of the year, you know, we, we got this taken from us last year with, with the pandemic. So we've got a lot of events that we're looking to try to lay out for the patio where it's, you know, kind of pushing our business to outdoors. With, with feedback over the years, it's always seemed to be a pain point of, of 11:00, 11:00 PM being the shutdown time. So with all the events that we've listed here, that's exactly what we, we plan on doing. We've got our, our decibel meter, we've got our, our sound controls and everything in order. And we're looking to do fairly similar things that we've done in the past with ladies' nights, dueling pianos, a couple of different things we're looking to do is a comedy show outside, you know, no swears or anything like that. Do a movie night on the patio, which we're actually approved to do. We just wanted to add in the, the details of what we're doing. And then to kick off our patio with a couple of live bands, again, falling in line with the, the decibel levels that, that were agreed upon prior. So nothing, nothing crazy, over the top, having 11 o'clock curfew with this stuff and, and turning it down. And, you know, we're really just looking to get back into the swing of things. So we've been hit pretty hard. So having all this outdoor activity certainly helps us get over the hump.
Okay, I wonder what the, thank you, Mr. McLaren, I'm sure the board will have questions. So I'll just try to work with the board here as close as we can. How, what's the best way to proceed? I mean, I could lead the way and we could go over each individual thing, but just maybe for a little history, just out of the respect to our new, two new colleagues on the board. We did have a situation where just in town, we talk about decibels. We actually, the, 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 the Tuxbury Police Department, now we have a decibel reader. So the big thing was we did get a lot of complaints around noise, around noise. So we do have a decibel meter and the bylaws of Tuxbury is after 10 o'clock, it's 65 decibels. So we did have a prior history to going down to Wamerset and testing that with the police. And we have received a few calls. I think Mr. Montori sent along all the, the police logs over the last three years. I think there were six in total, six in total. So there is history here. We're trying to do what's right for the business and we're trying to do what's right for the residents and a local business and the, the flourish is right there. So we do have some history. So I don't know, maybe I'll pause there and see if the board has questions on history first. And then we can move to, to, to what's in front of us. Maybe that's the best way to approach because there, there is a lot of things had to consider. And if there's no, no questions around history, we can just certainly, you know, any questions, fair game.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Ms. Wellman. But Ms. Wellman, please.
Thank you. So just to review for the public, I think it would be good for, for Mr. McLaren to kind of outline what he's looking for. I do appreciate that it's an encompassing approach that you've brought forward with everything in order for the summer that you're looking for. It's, it's, it's better that way for us to kind of get an assessment of, of what you want to do overall. So I think that's great and you're bringing it to us in May, that's great. I want to talk a little bit about amplified sound because I think this has been a bit of a gray area. And it's been on the entertainment licenses in the past. And a lot of these uses require amplified sound. We've in the past agreed to acoustic uses. And so I just kind of, I noticed that the comedy show, for instance, includes amplification system. I, I would think that the live music with bands would also require amplified sound. The movie night would probably require amplified sound. The dueling pianos would probably require amplified sound, but those weren't checked off in the application. So I just, I think that there's some conversation around amplified sound because the residents that we continually hear from, that seems to be the biggest, the biggest sticking point that we've all kind of tried to, you know, talk about. We've, I know I've gone down and talked with you and the owners at Tuxbury Greenery to work around some of these issues and you've done a great job of turning on all the speakers and, you know, trying to, trying to work those things out. But I think that our entertainment license isn't, isn't as clear maybe as it could be. So I would think this time we should, we should look to be very clear and have that conversation around amplified sound. I don't know what the pleasure of the board is, but that's my chief concern with, you know, staying under the decibel limit, of course. But the, you know, amplified sound on Wednesdays, Thursdays, Fridays, Saturday nights can be challenging. Although I don't know that any of your applications are for Saturday nights. They're mostly Thursdays, Fridays and some Wednesdays, is that correct?
Correct.
Perhaps Mr. Montori can tell us about amplified sound or, or maybe what your requirements are, you think, Mr. McLaren?
Yeah, I mean, amplification certainly comes from any of that stuff. For all the stuff that we're doing, whether it's a microphone, whether it's playing out of a projector, it's all, it's all considered amplified, I guess. But I mean, I guess the, the decibel levels are what they are. The DJ level, the band levels, all that stuff kind of lines all, all together with, with amplification. So I don't know what difference there would be compared to what we have done in the past.
Right. Well, I think in the past, we've talked about acoustic sound, so unplugged sort of version on the patio. And there have been different exceptions made and so forth for different, different events.
And then with our Thursday night ladies' night, that's all been amplified sound with a DJ plugging into the system. The dueling pianos, those have all been amplified sound, plugging into the system. Yeah, we've talked about just keeping it to acoustic, but that's for our standard entertainment license that we have. We're allowed, that's, it's limited to acoustic, it's limited to the amplified. These are things that are above and beyond our current entertainment license besides the movie night. The movie night, we're already approved to do in that format that we've submitted to you guys. It was just more of bringing it to, you know, your attention, just to say, hey, this is what we plan on doing.
These are summer events, sure.
Yeah, just to summarize.
And just to jump in, Ms. Wellman, is it safe to say, Mr. McLaren, this is really outside events versus inside events?
Correct.
Right.
So for example, on a Monday night, you could have an acoustic performer or Tuesday night, you might have an acoustic performer on your patio. But your intention is that certain Wednesdays, Thursdays and Fridays, there would be amplified sound on the patio up to 11:00 PM?
Yeah, anything that had any significance to it, we, we certainly wanted to bring awareness to, to let everybody know, you know, what we're doing. It's fairly consistent to what we've done in the past, based on the time. I know I've submitted applications prior that would end at midnight, but, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't favorable. So, you know, we're not even wasting our time with going to midnight. We're just no different than we've done before. Just do it at 11 o'clock.
All right, let's open up the other board for questions. And again, this is just, this is not the best format, but I think we'll get through it. So how about Mr. Johnson? but I think we'll get through it. So how about Mr. Johnson on your side? Questions for the applicant?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm glad that we opened this hearing. Um, and I know that Mr. McLaren and his organization expended some funds to notify the abutters as is required. Um, but I do know that, um, my colleagues and I received some communication from, uh, residents in the, um, near vicinity. They're not direct abutters. Um, in the past, uh, they were provided the courtesy of notice. Um, and it's being represented that they were not aware of this hearing. Um, so I'm wondering if Mr. McLaren can comment on those efforts and why a change in course, if in fact that's the case. Because, um, I, I am concerned about the, um, the noise component. I've had the, um, uh, experience of participating in some of these discussions previously. Um, and I know that there are a number of residents concerned about, um, that aspect of it. So it does concern me that they may or may not be aware of this request. And I think as the licensing authority, um, we do have some, um, responsibility to ensure that. And to add on to that, I'm more concerned because we're in a virtual environment. We're not in an in-person setting. Um, so not everybody, um, necessarily is plugged in to follow what's going on. So can you, can you speak to, um, those efforts, Mr. McLaren? I, I don't know that it's factually accurate, but it's been represented that those parties in the general area that historically were given notice by you, I believe at the board's request, were not for some reason this time around. And I'm curious if you can clarify that for us.
Yeah. So there was a, there was a time, um, a couple of years ago that there was just so much confusion amongst what we wanted, what we were looking to do on the patio. And, you know, we really needed input from a lot of people. We needed input from a lot of the, the neighbors. And, you know, it was extended above and beyond the abutters to the 300 foot list and then even beyond to try to get some resolution from everybody. So we expanded, uh, those efforts and invited people down to do sound testing with us, brought them out to the patio. Um, and, and, you know, we even went over, I think some of the board members actually went over as well. And, and we were trying to make efforts for our main entertainment license, which is not what's here. So our main entertainment license hasn't changed for, um, two years now. I would say it might even be pushing on to the third year. So with that, these types of things that have no significant change that we've been approved for before, uh, we don't find it that it's as the bigger issue that was of, um, of, of with that, that needed the details from before because we were trying to do the sound testing. In that I sent out my business card to every single neighbor, uh, that's, that was in that, that neighborhood as well. And again, there's just no significant change really with, with what we're doing here. And, um, I mean, I could speak to the financial piece too with, uh, you know, sending out those, those letters. It was ongoing at the time and I spent a significant amount of money continually, you know, trying to, to get through that, that the main entertainment license. And, you know, it's, it's quite extensive for, you know, sending out to 60, 70, uh, neighbors. But this is just, we didn't think that, that it warranted any significant, uh, any significant, um, outreach because it wasn't a, a, a big significant change. Um.
And just correct me if I'm wrong or misunderstanding, but the, the main license that you hold, entertainment license does not include amplification. Is that correct or am I incorrect in that statement?
I believe the main entertainment license includes, um, includes amplification and indoor and outdoor. The, um, the process that we went through, we were requested to send the abutters list to the town. We sent it. Nobody, it was, we, I think we even, I think we were required to do the abutters list. And I think we did the abutters plus the 300. Um, and no time did anybody dispute that, hey, this isn't the right, the right list at all. At that point, we, we probably would have had a discussion about it possibly. But the, um, yeah, we, I didn't think we were doing anything out of the ordinary.
Okay. Well, I can, I can, uh, appreciate.
We received the list to send it to from the town. So I think that was kind of.
And I, I think you're correct in that you satisfied the requirement. What, what I'm getting at or concerned about is that we've had communications from, um, nearby residents, um, who, um, in the past were a participant or given the opportunity through notice and, and this time around they were not. So they're, um, they're expressing some concern about that. And I, I think there's some merit to that. Um, unrelated to your business and, and our experience, we've learned from other license holders and experiences with, um, businesses that are, you know, abutting neighborhoods that, um, the best resolution, and you, you spoke to it earlier in your comments, is, um, good, strong communication and active engagement with the local neighbors and community that, you know, are impacted, uh, most directly by what you're trying to do. And, um, it does concern me that there are some communications, um, presented to the board, um, and, um, that raise those concerns. Um, and there are some communications presented to the board that question the notice, um, and their ability to be aware of what's being requested or what they're, what you're asking this board to take action on. So, um, I, I want to urge you regardless of what transpires from here on out this evening to, um, rethink that outreach effort. Um, I know it can be costly, um, when you have to notify abutters, but there are other ways to reach out to your neighbors that are beyond the requirement. Um, and I think you described some efforts to do that in the past. And I would encourage you to, um, consider doing that again, um, and continuing to engage, um, your, um, neighbors in the vicinity because they are, uh, impacted more than anybody else by activities that take place.
Yeah, I, I certainly appreciate that. I would encourage anybody to, uh, um, to reach out to me directly. Like I said, I sent out my business card, certified mail to every single neighbor upwards of 70, 75 people. You guys may have received phone calls. I have received nothing, no correspondence. I don't. You know, I do my efforts, put my efforts in. We've been through a tough spot. And, um, I think it's, uh, it's a responsibility on both sides to, to be able to communicate effectively.
Yep, I agree with you.
Welcome those phone calls. Just still haven't gotten any.
Yep. And, uh, I read, uh, I read the story in the paper and, um, pleased that, um, you know, the PPP, um, was afforded to Wamisett Lanes. That's a, um, a terrific, um, financial, um, assistance in difficult times. But I'd also note that, uh, that's coming from taxpayers. And some of those taxpayers are your neighbors, um, both businesses and residents. And so we're all in the boat together. And, um, I'm really pleased that, um, you were able to and your, um, your family was able to take advantage of that program because it's important to you and certainly important to Tuxbury as a, as a business contributing to our community. Um, but again, I think it goes to, um, the relationships that exist and the need to, um, engage those people who do have concerns to try to come here with, um, a presentation or a request that, um, those impacted can get behind and support as opposed to having potentially, and I'm not suggesting this is the case, but potentially, um, you know, an adversarial type of situation where this board has to decide, um, one way or the other. Um, and I, I think the better outcome is when everyone's rowing the boat together. And I'm concerned this evening that that's not the case. Um, so I'm hopeful that you'll rethink, as I said, the, the communication and go above and beyond, um, to communicate whether the answer you get from your neighbors is what you want to hear or not. I do think you're asking them to assist you as a business owner in that neighborhood. And I think that makes it incumbent upon you, in my opinion, to go out of your way to hear what they have to say and to try to accommodate their concerns. Some of them.
I would listen to them. I would have definitely put in midnight, 1 o'clock, but I, I, I put in some efforts. I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I hear you. And I'm not trying to lecture, but, um, but I am concerned about the noise. And I'm also concerned, I know Mr. Kelly opened this and I, I didn't participate in this suggestion, but I know Mr. Kelly summarized it by saying it, rather than do these as one offs, let's put them all on one request. And in thinking about this myself, because I didn't participate in that discussion, um, this comes across to me as a big ask because there are, I think, if I counted right, about 23 or 24 evenings where this is outdoor noise that affects people. And it's, it's a concern in that context.
And it may, it may seem like a big ask. Um, with the dates, I had requested to kind of leave a, an open blanket where I only had maybe, I think it was five, 10, 15. We were just trying to have an open blanket on just random dates. These dates might scare everybody, but I guarantee you that we're not going to have events on all of these dates. The problem is, is we're going through a pandemic. I can't nail down dates. We don't know what the governor is going to do. So we threw a bunch of dates in here to have flexibility in case we weren't able to get the green light on some of these things because I wasn't able to have the blanket, uh, approval like we were able to do with the drive-in movies. So I understand that these dates might look a little scary, but I guarantee right now that we're not going to have every single one of these dates. I'd be lucky if we get 60% of these. Be lucky if we get two bands out there. I mean, it's just, it's, it's, it's the way that we had to approach it that was requested as to how we should approach it. So that's why.
That's, that's helpful explanation. I appreciate it. We weren't aware of that until you just told us now. So that's goes to that communication. Mr. Chairman, I'll reserve any further questions, um, and comments at this time out of respect for my colleagues.
Okay. How about Ms. Tronick?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. And, um, I appreciate your, um, questions and your comments. I too was going to ask about the, um, abutters. So I do appreciate, um, Mr. McLaren's explanation of that. I also was concerned with the bands. Um, and, you know, I, I think that, um, we didn't get a lot of feedback on the movie nights. I'm wondering, um, in your outreach to your abutters, what have you heard they are most concerned about? Have they spoken to you about, you know, the ladies night was something that, I do appreciate the 11 o'clock, by the way. I have to say that out loud. Um, so, but they talked about, I mean, the lady nights have been pretty consistent, um, something that you have been doing. Um, and then, uh, the dueling pianos. This is different than what you did last year with the dueling pianos, if I am correct in my memory, but I might be wrong. And then.
Just a different location.
Same?
Yep, same, same setup.
Okay. And then what about the bands? So I'm, I'm like, those are the things that kind of jump out at me. But I'm wondering if your neighbors have said, like, I could live with this, but I couldn't live with that. Or you've had no communication with them. I'm just curious. I know you've reached out to them.
Yeah, discussions in the past has always been the, uh, getting on the microphone. It's the person singing. It's the, um, it's going beyond 11 o'clock. It's going above the decibel limits. And I've had the police down there plenty of times. If you guys say that it's, it's six, some people, sometimes they're just kind of cruising through. Uh, I've yet to be a part of anything that's been above the decibel level. I've yet been, I've yet to receive any notification from the police, um, uh, with their decibel level that we've been above any of that stuff. Um, but, but the, the communication from the neighbors in the past have been when they get on the microphone. However, I've spent a significant amount of money on our sound system, indoor and outdoor and control system to be able to take each different part of the mixer and turn stuff down, turn it up, control it inside, outside. We added speakers outside. All of those things. There was a significant investment to approach this. We did this all over COVID while we were shut down. So nobody's even been able to see it because it's, 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 it's all new. So, um, yeah, we've, 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 we've tried to answer all of those calls. And I understand, I try to put myself in the, in the shoes of, of the neighbors. And again, that's the 11 o'clock. It's, it's the amplification. It's the percussion on the drums, all of that stuff. So, you know, we'll have somebody over here. I think we've got on the 24th and we get them over here before and just make sure that everything is all in line and, and, and sound tested appropriately. And I can't take the chance of, of, of ruining that relationship with the neighbors and with the town and, and, and going backwards here. So if we can't do it, I'm not going to do it. This isn't a, hey, um, we're just going to do, the town's going to support us. They're going to get, get all behind us because it's, it's, it's so much more beyond that, uh, that, that I gotta live with this for, for 30, 40 years. Some of these guys are going to live and retire in their home. So, um, it's, it's a big deal for me.
So I appreciate that. And what I would say to that is, um, it's really exciting to hear about the work that you were able to do while the, uh, pandemic was taking place. And it looks to me, if I'm reading, um, the schedule in the paperwork correctly, that your first event is on June 3rd. And to Ms. Wellman's point, it would be, might be, um, behoove you to reach out to some of those neighbors, especially, uh, Tuxbury Greenery, which is right next door and really, um, is impacted. And then those houses right behind you. And show them the, um, work that you've done and put in to try to improve their, uh, quality of life.
Yeah. And to be, to be quite honest with you, I thought we were required to send out the abutters list, the, the direct abutters list. We went above and beyond and did the abutters plus 300 feet.
Yep.
And I thought that we're, to be honest, I thought we were covered with some particular neighbors that I know that, that, that have had issues in the past. Um, whether it goes above and beyond that and we're going down further, I'm, I'm not sure. But, um, we did go above and beyond the request. And I got no problem speaking to the greenery. They, they were, their issues were more in the daytime and stuff like that. And.
I'm just saying though, you know, there, I, I agree with you that you went above and beyond. I'm just saying you've put in, you just shared with us that you put in a significant investment and it might be, um, behoove you to show your neighbors, um, the work that you've done. That's all.
Yeah. They're listening now. Invite them to come down anytime. They've got my card. They know where I work. I'm here almost all the time. I can send out a letter to everybody if someone wants.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How about Mr. Mackey?
Uh, yes. Were there any violations in the past? That was the one part I was kind of unclear on. I know there were mentions of complaints. Were there any violations or citations?
No, nothing that I've been aware of. Nothing has been brought to my attention. I've had, um, conversations with police officers that have come down. They've done their own sound testing. We test our sound every hour. And, um, you know, we've also had complaints about us having bands out there when we aren't having bands. We have complaints that we've had outdoor entertainment. And I've had to submit pictures back to the town saying that we don't have outdoor entertainment. So, you know, whatever calls you guys may have, you might have those six, but they're all fairly unfounded from, from my perspective, um, that, uh, and, and, and shared a little bit of inaccuracy. So.
Understood. Uh, did you just mention that you do your own decibel meter checks hourly?
Correct. Yep. Yep. We have a, uh, list. The manager on duty is responsible to go out there, uh, sound check with the, um, entertainer that night. Uh, everybody is, uh, has to agree to the decibel levels and everything in order for us to, uh, to bring them in. And, uh, and we check it every hour. And that'll always be acceptable. Anybody can walk in at any time and you can see it.
Understood. Uh, and there was mention of outreach that's been done in the past. And if my understanding is correct, you've, you've got the list from the town for your abutters and went one step further to include the 300 foot list. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And.
Which is what I thought we were, I thought we were going above and beyond. When I, when I talk about what we had done in the past, like I went to all the way over to the railroad tracks. I'm talking maybe a quarter of a mile down the road and spent a significant money on that just to get every, as many people's input as, as possible on it. And to just make it kind of a big show of, hey, this is what we've got going on. So that's what I didn't think we needed to do again and go. That's what I didn't think we needed to do again and go way above and beyond where those thousands of dollars that I spent to 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 set that up and and send out for postage and and letters and. All that stuff.
Understood. And did you say that there were? A number of people you know that regularly have issue or had issues when you were doing that outreach?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
And and I thought they were covered under the the three hundred feet.
Okay, understood.
And I'll be honest, I didn't I didn't even look at the list to see if they were actually on it, but. I can just assess that three hundred feet is I can throw a baseball to the house, so.
Understood, uh Mr. Chairman. No further questions, thank you.
Okay, I have a few. Uh Mr. McLaren, you covered them. I mean, it's still we're under pandemic, so even if this stuff was approved, the Commonwealth trumps the town and and you know that um. So like to your point, I don't know when, you know, I I think it's promising pretty soon with the Commonwealth, but some of these still could be in jeopardy even if we approve it. But for me, it's simple. You definitely have a very dynamic business. It's 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 a gem in Tewksbury. People come far near to your location. You have a lot to offer. Um but you you know, we do have a residence right there. We do have the Tewksbury Florist and Greenery right there. We know the history. I can say. Being on the board for a little bit, you I think you started, I think the greenery, keep me honest, I think they close at five o'clock um. Or or six o'clock. I'm pretty sure it's five o'clock, but. Yeah, and a lot of these you started really early and a couple of those uh police reports for two thousand eighteen nineteen, they were like eleven thirty, eleven forty-five. You know what I mean? So now I I I do appreciate the eleven o'clock. I think that's time to button up the radios because even you you zoned appropriately. You know, there's still a residential mix and and I do um and I do appreciate the eight o'clock starts. That's pretty big that you're not. Banging drums when the greenery is open. It's you know, that's that's a change too in in your hours. Um for me, it's pretty simple. Whether it's a guitar, whether it's a drum, whether it's someone singing, we have a certain level of decibels. You can't go over. That's it. Noise is noise, so you you know, sometimes I do get nervous for the bands because when they're grabbing that microphone, the general, you know, the adrenaline's running. How are they going to know what sixty decibels or seventy decibels? You know what I mean? Or people now singing with the band. It's not a bad thing. I can't wait for those days to come back. But I just think they get simple. You you know, every hour you have to maintain and 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 um. You know, go right along. I know you go right along the two, you you your fence boundaries, but for me, it's simple. You can't go over that decibels and you don't go over the decibels then. Then everything's everything's, you know, i- in a much better place. So I really don't have much um like I said, this is. Thank you for the board. This isn't easy because we are covering a lot of ground, different events and different instruments and different acoustics and all have you. So it's not um. So so good conversation. So if there's nothing else from the board, what I'd like to do at this time is open it up uh because it's a public hearing. Uh Mr. Durton, do we have anyone um any residents on?
Not at the moment, Mr. Chairman, but um there was some interest earlier in the meeting, so. Uh maybe when the stream catches up, uh I I think we might have a few callers.
Okay, let's do that. How about let's open. So we covered a lot. Does any of the board members have any more questions or want to go deeper on any particular aspects of the app of the applications here? Because we'll, there is a sixty second lag for residents to jump on. So how about from the board? Anything, any other questions for Mr. McLaren?
Um yeah, Mr. Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Um so so my understanding of y- your existing standard license. Um that uh you uh we we granted for you. It's pretty long. I'm trying to pull it up right now so I can look at it. Um.
Mr. Wellman, I might have the um.
Do you have a license?
The pre- the previous licenses?
There's like a packet of licenses and we have your standard license. There we go.
I know that's tough, I could.
And Michael dot. So this is your standard license. That's in effect and and Mr. Montori, how is this in effect in perpetuity? It does have to be renewed in December. When does this get?
I think this goes this goes till December thirty first.
Of twenty twenty-one? Because this is expired.
I think the twenty-one is similar.
I think so too. I don't think we made any substantive changes because of COVID. There wasn't much going on.
You did not. Yeah, it stayed the same.
Um and so it says no amplified sound except radio, no amplified acoustics and and all of that stuff and this is um. So this says amplified acoustics shall only be allowed Monday through Sunday from twelve P M to eleven P M. What does that mean? If it says that there's no amplified sound except for radio and no amplified acoustics. And yet it's allowed on Monday through Sunday from twelve P M to eleven P M.
Yeah, I think it was adjusted to.
The license seems to be in.
We ended it at eleven.
Yeah. Um and then it does ask for a special entertainment license and that's what we're talking about tonight. Um and that's that's the purpose of this hearing. I'm hoping that we do hear from. Um some of the folks that that do reach out to the the town manager's office and to the our the individual selectmen. So this is an example of the luau night that you did last year or two years. Well, I guess it was last year, wasn't it? Um.
We weren't able to do it.
You weren't in the end because of the protocols? Okay. Um and this does have for amplified sound, I think, is listed here. Movie night. Now, this one says dancing by paste patrons and live music. Do you have a lot of dancing? Is it like Footloose? What movie are we watching? I'm just.
There was a uh what was the? The Greatest Showman. There was some dancing in there. The kids doing their thing.
Oh, yeah. No, I could totally see that. I could totally see that. Yep. Um okay, so. This is just to give folks a little bit of a flavor of what we've talked about before. Uh dueling pianos has been outside. I know we've gotten calls in the dueling pianos. Um and um. But then I have to concur with um with Mrs. Tronix that I'm concerned about the bands and I'm just if you can give us a little sense of why bands outside. Um versus inside, you have bands inside pretty much whenever you want, right?
Not under the current conditions with with COVID.
So is it COVID related that you want to have bands outside or is that something that you're looking for permanent change?
Right right now. I mean, I'm not looking for a permanent change on the entertainment license. This is just like a supplement to the original entertainment license. This is just a special license. For those specific events. Um the. Yeah, I mean, we 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 were struggling to be able to do it in-house. We just don't have the room to be able to to host a a band and at this point in time, we just need to be very, very creative. And and people want to be outside. They don't want to be inside the building right now and that could be the same. I don't know. That could go on for years. It's just the way that uh you know, COVID's kind of impacted us and I would prefer the opportunity to be outside as well, prior to COVID and even even after, so. That's the experience we're trying to trying to create. We're a we're an entertainment center and to do anything less than entertain people. Uh we're just not doing what we're uh we were built to do and um. You know, that's 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 what we are. That's 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 how we market ourselves. That's how we brand ourselves. That's how we. Survive for the next thirty years and that's what we that's what we get excited about too.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the need to pivot particularly during a pandemic for sure. Um but the patio wasn't wasn't built there, wasn't originally in in the. Initial designs of of your facility. Um so you know, it's a change to the residents and it's, I think, to some of the residents, it feels as if it's. You know, every year, the 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 amount of activity and and you know, events and noise outside increases. It's just it's now it's it's Wednesday nights. Now it's a comedy night outside, so there's a lot of that. So I just, I think that it's sort of um this incremental increase in events and so forth is what we're hearing about and that's that's where my concern comes from.
Understandably.
Yeah, and that's that's kind of what I'm representing. So but I understand that we have a caller, so I'm gonna stop talking.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh we we do have a caller and I would just like to say to anyone listening. We do have a significant amount of callers trying to call in, but we only have one line. So if you hear a busy signal, um can you wait and just call back? Um after you've heard the other speaker talking just because uh we're dealing with a lot of calls here, but I will let the first caller uh in. Uh caller, whatever you'd like.
And I'm sorry, just name and address for the record, please?
Yeah. Caller, are you there?
Hello?
Yep, uh name and address for the record, please?
Sure. My name is Keith Collick, thirty-one, Veranda Ave.
The floor is yours.
All right. Um I've been listening to you guys. Um I'm glad, you know, you guys are starting to understand what we're going through. Um just some clarification. In the past, we were notified as abutters on Veranda Avenue, Neptune. Littlefield and there were some streets, asshole streets that were notified. This has been going on for three years and his request by the board. Was that he was supposed to do this as a rep 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 set. Now, what happened just recently, the reason why you're getting so many calls tonight is because the Tewksbury Florist, who was the only abutter. Was reached out to me and asked me about, did I know what was going on? And I said, no, we never received anything. This is all past few years, we've been giving, you know, like I said, we've been giving these things um certified lens to us. So when I got that information yesterday. I went out and made copies myself and I went through Neptune, Littlefield Ave, Veranda Ave and left. Information in each box stating what was going on. So. I'm very appreciative that I've heard that there's going to be a lot more calls coming in because of my efforts to do this. That's number one. Number two is um. The the thing with the sound is, and that's what we've been talking about, Miss Miss Wellman said, perfect example. As the years have progressed. It's gotten louder and louder and every year he wants to add more things. For instance, the bands, you decided back on the December twentieth. Um the last one that he was never going to have a band, that he had to prove to to you and the neighborhood. That he was a good na- a a good partner with us. He hasn't done that because of COVID. Now he wants to have bands. He wants to have a comedy show. And on top of that, he wants to amplify everything. We had the discussion about acoustics. And we also had a discussion about the implication. There is a difference. And we had that discussion last year and it was agreed upon that the bands wasn't going to be a a situation. And the fact that Mr. Um he made mention that there was no band, that's not true. I submitted to the to town manager a video of what he took of his own band. I still have the paperwork of the name of the band that he did. So when Mr. McLaren, I don't know what he's talking about. He's he's not making a truth statement. And then the other thing again is the volume and and she made perfect sense. You can't control the volume of people singing and screaming and all that other stuff. So basically, you guys got you got the right idea. This 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 never stops. This is three years of continued. Things going on, so. That was that that's that's basically I I had too much I had to say. And and again, they may mention the fact that this building was never supposed to have us added on. And we we don't have a problem with the inside stuff as we discussed last year. We agreed to that and not only that, but he also got a liquor license extended from. He can serve liquor now till eight o'clock in in the morning and so forth and we didn't fight about that as long as it was inside. But this this gentleman continues to try and do things outside that affects us. Thursdays and Fridays for the rest of since beginning of June to the end of the year, he's got stuff. I understand he he just made this thing. But he's he's got the idea that if he gets this approved, he can do all that and it's not right. Basically, again, that's I just want to clarify things that he has some responsibilities that he hasn't 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 done. He's made he's made comments that he's done this whole sound system. He's done the whole sound system. How come he hasn't invited us? Or the board to come out and see his sound system before he put this together? So there's a lot more questions and answers that we're giving from Mr. McLaren. And basically with that, there's going to be other callers. They've got questions. They've got things that they want to talk about, so I'll basically leave it at that and let somebody else call in and and voice their opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
O- okay, Mr. Chairman, I have another caller already lined up. Uh caller, if you could state your name and address? Uh yeah, you're on right now.
Okay.
Just just name and address for the record, please. We can hear you.
Okay. You're talking to me?
Yes.
My name is Kathy Collantonio. Hi, my name is Kathy.
The floor is yours, Kathy. Yep.
For two main street, Tewksbury. I did write a letter and I do have it here. Can I read the letter or are they going to read it on me?
I do have the I do have the letter for the record. You could um sure, read it for the record and again, we're just going to keep the calls to five minutes, but go ahead, Kathy. Read it for the record.
I'm going to read the letter because I wrote it and okay. My name is Kathy Collantonio. I live in Flora Two Main Street in Tewksbury. My family and I own the Tewksbury Florist and Greenery and I live on the property. I have lived here for over fifty years. The patio of the Longest Up Bowling is practically in my backyard. A few years ago, my husband came to tell me he had the property sold. The bowling alley was going to be built. I said to him, who the heck bowls anymore? But I guess they do. I thought the bowling alley was supposed to be an indoor activity and I was not opposed to that. If I knew that what it was going to be was an outside nightclub, then I would have objected very strongly. This is what the owners of the Longest Up Bowling really want to do. It is not a place for it and that is all he wants to do and it belongs inside, not on the patio. The problem, I won't even read the rest of it. The patio could be used for dining, cornhole, boxing and all that, but he keeps pushing the envelope. One idea worse than the one before. I have a calendar which I have sent to you of all the things he wants this summer, twenty-eight events in all. The owners have the idea that the noise is the better. I should not have to hear any events at all. As you can see, there were twenty-eight total of twenty-eight total events for every Thursday and Friday nights and other nights. And that includes the amplification. I cannot object to anyone earning a living, but it should not interfere with how someone else lives. Do not have to listen to loud music in my own home, even with the windows closed. I've had the same for a month for many years and all the events he wants only to get every loud music is what they like. He should not be trying to experience any of these events. They should all be inside the building. I must be fair. If your family lived where I live and had to listen to him for so many nights, then how would you feel about it? And that's what I have to say. Okay, all right, here's my thought.
Hello, I'd like to speak to. My name is Frank Collantonio. I am the owner of the First Worth and Greenery. Um he said he. Did not have a big fan. Um he had posted online on his website, um July twenty eighth, two thousand nineteen. That probably played with only in the patio. He had a live band that night, which was a violation of his entertainment license. And no one did anything about that. I'll have to say about that.
Okay, any anything else to add?
Uh. I just have to say that there all this stuff should be done inside the um. You know, he he asked for an oversized building and closer to our property than he needed. Uh because he wanted room to put everything he needed inside the building. We didn't object and we let that happen. And now he wants to bring it even closer to us than he needed to be. Um it's just too loud to him to have a fan. I would have a band outside or. All this this um amplified music outside and not affect him when I'm on here. My mother lives right next door. Those people live right next door and it's too loud and too much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Would like to add that there was objections from the greenery. We were actually, it was actually a lawsuit against us and. To uh to to steal that from my family and uh we had.
Mr. McLaren, that's fine.
The money. So they did object. They did try to sue us.
Mr. McLaren, that's fine. Again, this is just a public hearing, so they're willing, they can voice their public opinion and they haven't been out of bounds yet. I'll keep everyone in check, so. Bear with us. Um Mr. Durden, do we have any other callers on the line?
Uh we do. Caller, if you could just uh state your name and address?
Yeah, Mike D. Sup twenty-eight, Veranda Ave.
Oh, you have the floor is yours.
Uh so last year, we did have an issue with the noise as one of the abutters that wasn't given any notice of the speeding. I found out through my neighbor Keys. I was present at last year's meeting that said to hold off on all of the licensing uh for Walmart until a comparable solution could come about with the abutters. And this is just something that we've been talking about. I wasn't notified as an abutter. I I had nothing. I had nothing. I no uh no idea this was happening. My questions are, it's this. I filed for a freedom of information request. Last year with the chief of police for six months worth of uh. for six months worth of, uh, uh, police laws in Wamisette Lane. There was one instance that kind of startled me. There was a machete in the, uh, in the mix somehow. If you can pull that up, you guys will see it. I just wanna know how we can keep the community safe with people being outside. I'm hearing beer bottles are getting thrown across to the, uh, landscapers, the greenery there. Is there any way that the town can order them to have a detail officer there, uh, on these nights to make sure that we feel safer with the community? And my second question is, is we also filed a noise complaint last year. A police sergeant came to my house, had the decibel meter out, measured it at my house. It was close to the boundary, but it wasn't just quite there yet. Is there a point where we're gonna settle on, on where they're gonna take the noise, uh, the, with the, with the meter, like, uh, at the decibel level?
Mr. Montori, can I direct those questions to you? So one was around a police detail. I don't know from a business standpoint, when is the applicant or restaurant owner responsible for, uh, for, for the police, the detail to, to the caller's point? Would you know, Mr. Montori?
I mean, the board could require, um, require police detail for any of the events, um, special events. That's not out of the ordinary. Um, as far as the decibel readings, I'd have to go back over the bylaw. There is a limit to, um, uh, the levels of noise, uh, from the property line, but I'd have to go back, but check the bylaw, but the bylaw is very specific on that.
So the police shouldn't come to my front, or where we're hearing the live music outside, they should go to the property line? Because there was a few times that that happened.
They would probably go to both just to determine, um, the exact issue, but I'd have to check the bylaw for that.
The more important one, I mean, that's very, very important, obviously, for quality of life. The more important one is the safety of the neighborhood. I'd like to see, and I'm sure a bunch of people in neighborhoods like to see a police detail there. At least if there is an officer there, he can solve the noise pollution part of it and, uh, you know, the safety part of it as well.
And again, I'll, I'll take that question through the board. Mr. McLaren, is that something, uh, something that you ever considered in the, in the past? Or had, have you had police details for other, um, such-like events?
I've had police details that impacted traffic, um, but I do hire my own in-house security, uh, when we had, um, uh, obviously without, without COVID, all, all last year, two thousand nineteen, we had our own in-house security to keep, um, to keep the facility safe. It was one thing that we wanted to do, that we talked to Chief Sheehan at the time to make sure that we keep, keep that, uh, perception, um, well, to let, let, let everybody know, the community know that we're not warranting, uh, we're not, we're not allowing any of that, that, that bad activity. So we made sure we did that for the first six months, and we continue to do that throughout. And, um, we've got our own third-party security system, security team that, uh, that, that deals with that stuff. And they're all EMT certified, they're all, uh, crowd safety certified. All of our managers are crowd safety certified. Uh, we go above and beyond, we're, um, you know, Code Adam certified, CPR certified, every single one of our managers. So, um, we haven't had any issues in the past from any of our, our major events. I know that he brought up some, some other details, but let's just all forget, let's not forget what was here and the, the substantial investment that we had to make in the town of Tewksbury and.
I, I one hundred percent for your business. I want you to succeed, just as per a safety standpoint, working the industry, and, and it's not working in the bars. We've always had a police detail. If there was ever a fight, I get it, third party, you can hush, hush things, I get it, one hundred percent. But I'd like to see some, some people being held accountable for some certain things. I've heard staff members have had their cops broken into, the cameras have been down. I mean, it's all the police details. I just wanna see some sort of accountability there, and that's why I would like to recommend to the board, if you could have a police detail on these days. It would make me and I'm sure the rest of the community feel safer.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else to add?
No, that's it, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Good, uh, great points. Mr. Dorrington, a- any other callers?
Uh, if you give me one second, Mr. Chairman, I'm just gonna call one person back.
Take your time, take your time.
Mr. Chairman, while he's doing that, if, if I may offer a comment or a suggestion?
Please.
Um, I, I, I wanna inquire, Mr. McLaren, in light of some of the comments tonight, um, I personally, I'll just tip my hand a little bit. I'd be hard-pressed to approve what you're asking us to do. I opened, um, my commentary earlier with, um, some comments around reach out to the neighborhood, communication to the neighborhood. Um, you, you apprised us that you've made some investments in your sound system, um, that I don't think anyone is familiar with. I wanna urge you to think about, um, asking us maybe to continue this, giving you an opportunity to meet with your neighbors, listen to their concerns, maybe revise some of what you're asking for. I don't know, that's your decision, but, um, rather than, um, belabor the point, I just wanna offer that for consideration, 'cause I, I, I started the evening with concerns, and I'm not feeling any better about things as I listen to your neighbors. Um, we've heard four of them now.
I, I understand that. I could get a, I could get two hundred people to call in and talk about and praise this, this business and all that stuff. I get it, there's three or four neighbors that are a little upset. But those same three or four neighbors that might be a little upset have yet to call me. In the last two and a half years, they've yet to call me and have a conversation. And I, I've done above and beyond, and I request that they reach out to me, come down. I'll sit them, I'll buy them a drink, buy them a beer, buy them food, and we can sit down. I'll show them the, I'll give them the, the grand old tour of how our si- sound system works. But for me to go out, send out all these certified letters and everything, I've, I've done my part. Now it's up to them. Stop, stop taking pictures and sending it to the town and complaining. Everybody's got my number, they've got my cell phone number, they've got my email address, they know where I work. I've invited them down countless times. I've hosted their, our own sound meetings multiple times. I've invited the, the, the board of selectmen down to do it. I've done my part. Now it's up to the community, to, to the neighbors to, to, to come on down and, 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 and check it out, because I've, I've done my part. We've just gone through this crazy pandemic, almost lost our business, and, and it's, we're, we're trying to build our business back up. And, and, and again, what we had here before, um, isn't here. And again, I can have a hundred, two hundred people come on here and say, oh, this place is great. We've raised all kinds of money. We've already heard that stuff, and we're gonna continue to do that. But I, I've listened to the ma- I've listened to the, uh, to the neighbors. You know, the eleven o'clock, the sound decibels, they pull up all these artifacts from, from, from years prior that may be valid, may not be valid, but I've listened to them every single time. I've, I've invited them to come down. I've never once said, no, I can't meet with any of you. Not once.
We covered that. Doctor, Mr. McLaren, you're good, we covered that. Mr. Johnson, anything else on your side?
No, we're just trying to thread a needle here and keep everybody happy and on the right page. And, um, I respect what you're saying, but I do think the burden is more on, on you, Mr. McLaren, than the neighbors to reach out. I believe that's the case. And while I respect all that's been done in the community, um, I, I, I really believe that the olive branch has to come out from, from you to them as opposed to.
What would you like to see me do specifically? I'll do it tomorrow.
I, I.
Down, knocking doors, each individually.
Yep, I would encourage you. I don't think it ha- I don't think it has to be done by certified male. I think you can find a way to communicate with that neighborhood. You have the four people who've raised their hands today. One gentleman indicated that he made information available to everyone. He can be a conduit to help you with that. But encourage people to come to see you. Come over, invite them. Have an honest conversation on your patio. Show them the sound system. Maybe have a something, um, an event where they can listen to the sound. Allow them to offer their insights. Um, I'm happy to come over. I know my fellow selectmen, it sounds, have done that in the past. This is, um, this is a situation where, um, it takes cooperation and collaboration, my humble opinion. Because we do value Wamisette Lanes in Tewksbury and all that you bring to the table, I can say for myself. But I also value every one of those residents who have raised their hand, and I also value the business that is next door to yours, that's been there since the nineteen fifties. They have just as much right to enjoy their property as you do.
What do we change? What do we change on this, on this application that, that makes all of that go away? Because it doesn't. I've had the conversations with our neighbors. Uh, midnight was an issue, now we're at eleven o'clock.
Yeah. It, it, I'll just cut, I'll cut, Mr. McLaren, I'll cut right to the chase. It probably doesn't. So, so we have to just proceed as, we have, we have to proceed as a board based on all the feedback. It probably doesn't. You're probably not gonna break bread with them. There, I said it. So that's okay, that's okay. You can agree to disagree. But we, now, let's just, as a board, let's, let's, let's bring it right back to the board here. And, um, Mr. Dorrington, anything else, any other callers on the line?
Uh, yes, we do. Uh, caller, if you could just, um, turn down that background noise and state your name and address?
Yes, this is Tami Ministeri at Sixth Act J Street. Um, again, I just wanted to let everyone know that I'm just hearing about this again from Keith, my neighbor, on Veranda. Um, the only reason I'm calling in is if this stuff does pass, is that I will feel comfortable calling and having the police come down to our house, which we have four streets over, if I, is the fans of the concern for me of having the loud noise. I go to a lot of functions that are banned, so I understand the noise on that. I agree that you do a great job at Wamisette. I was just there for a soccer banquet, but the only question that I have is that the new surround sound, if it was just put in over COVID, how is that gonna change from the previous ones that I thought was already put in?
We, so, I appreciate your, um, um, your feedback. The, so we had a sound system that was put in prior. We had nine or ten speakers. We've added fourteen, we've added, um, four or five more speakers. And all it, all it does is it brings the sound closer to the people, so you don't have to play it louder. So we had seventy-five or eighty percent of the patio lined up with speakers. Now we've got more, we've got them on both sides. We can bring it closer to the people, we don't have to play it as loud. It keeps the decibel levels, um, lower, and that was the major issue from before. And, and I encourage, if we, if we do get approved here and, and, and there's an issue, you, you, everybody's got my cell phone number, I'll post it again, or, or call the police, have them come down. Like, it's not, um.
Again, we're not against what goes on. I think what things have to be is maybe not doing this cold clone. The comedians, I don't see that being a problem. Julie's playing pianos from the last time they did it, I could hear it over my house. I could see them, I could hear them singing Happy Birthday. That, to me, is that I can't sit out on my desk now. I need to go in because I can't listen to my music or my, uh, TV show or whatever. I guess what I would ask is that only one of these get approved so that we can see what the feedback is, that can we hear it? Now, one question I do have is that you're saying that you got approved for movie night. I don't remember having anything on a movie night on the patio. I do remember the patio, uh, the movie nights being in the parking lot. I was there, I was at one of them. I didn't hear it because it went through the speakers. But on the patio, are we gonna hear it? I know it's already been.
We had, we had five free movies for kids on Wednesday or Tu- Tuesday or Wednesday nights. And yeah, it, it doesn't make much.
That, during COVID.
Okay. All right, any other, any other, any other comments for the ca- ca- uh, for the caller?
No, thank you, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for calling.
All right, and I'm gonna put, uh, another caller in directly, he's been on hold. Okay, caller, if you could state your name and address?
Hi, my name is Jackie Blakey, and I am a resident of thirty-three Veranda Ave.
Okay, the floor is yours.
So I would just like to, I'm not gonna waste anyone's time as my neighbors and the butters have already pointed out multiple facts that have occurred since the establishment opened. Um, would like to say that the events lined up for June, I just wanna bring to the board's attention that they do begin while school is still in session. Just wanna point that out, though, it was Thursday night, ladies' nights, school is still in session. We have children that live here. We have people that are working throughout the summer. Now, to Mr. McLaren, I understand that this is your establishment. I do take personal offense on behalf of the neighbors and the butters that you made the claim that things are being stolen from you. That's extremely offensive, and maybe you wanna reconsider that it is not the neighbors or the butters' job to reach out to you, to communicate. It is your job to reach out to us, and you have not done that this year. For this meeting tonight with this list of events, the information was submitted to us by Keith Pollack. That's who gave us the information, who got it from the greenery, who did not get it from you. And you know the location of Veranda Ave, and that is according to Above and Beyond, where you had gone to make sure that this information was sent. It didn't reach us. We aren't calling and banding altogether to go against you. These are all facts, these are opinions. This is how the neighborhood feels, and this is quality of life. We understand that there is a large source of revenue that comes from your establishment. And in order for you to be able to get that revenue back to the town, you have to make it. But I think it would be wise for you to, again, reconsider the words that you're putting out and remember what is fact. And people are not calling to try to belittle or undermine you in any way. We live here. The greenery, the woman said she's lived there for fifty years. People aren't doing this to make a problem, but to make sure that the people that are residents that sleep here, that need to go to bed, they hang up here, are comfortable. We were here. That's all that I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
I, I appreciate your feedback, um.
Mr. McLaren, no need, no, no, no need. We covered a couple of those points. If there was something new, I'd allow you, but I just, you know, for the sake of time, I think we've covered, um, what the caller stated, so. Mr. Dorrington, any more callers?
Uh, yes, we do have someone, uh, caller.
Okay. And I'll probably just for, I'll probably just entertain maybe a few more calls here, um, and hope, and then we'll go from there. So, go, name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is December twenty, Veranda Ave. Again, I just wanna put on the record that this is one of the many nights I do come over to Wamisette. I always ask for Don Junior or Don Senior, and neither of them are here. I understand that this evening, one of them's on the, I'd call, but, you know, they always say that they're here and that we never call. This is just one of the mi- many nights I've been here and, uh.
Okay, no, no, okay, thank you, thank, thank you for the call. Okay, thank you.
Here now, come on down.
Mr. McLaren, please. Sorry, uh, Mr. Dorrington, any more callers?
Uh, not at the moment, uh, Mr. Chairman, but, uh, there were a number of people trying to get through who might have just given up or might call back within the next thirty seconds, so, um.
We'll give it a, we'll, we'll, we'll give it another thirty seconds, and I think we have everything we have as a board, uh, to proceed with the hearing. So let's give it another thirty seconds, um, let's give it another thirty seconds. Someday we'll be back in Town Hall. We'll actually discuss that during the managers', um, section, someday.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Please, Miss Wallman.
I have a quick question for the manager, uh, regarding this application. Um, on the existing entertainment license, it says the police department will determine if an event requires a police officer detail. And I'm wondering if the police department has weighed in on all of these events?
I have to double-check. I'm sure they reviewed it, um, but I will follow back up with the, uh, police chief tomorrow.
Just with that particular in mind. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dorrington, any other callers?
Uh, no additional callers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Mackey. Real call though, Mr. Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Miss Wallman?
No.
Miss, Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Chair votes ayes, well, the public hearing is closed. So, let's bring it back to the board, um, you know, I, I, I felt, I felt that was a little intimidating, um, you know, and, and we're very open with the residents. We, we've been here before, um, we try to sort through the matters and get. we've been here before. Um, we try to sort through the matters and get multiple viewpoints and try to do what's fair for all involved. Um, you know, so, so I just thought it was a little bit, a little bit harsh, and I just want to share those comments. That's all. So with that being said, let's bring it back to the board. Um, questions, comments, directions, I'll seek. What's the pleasure of the board? Again, and there was a reason why we asked Mr. McLaren to bring all these together because we were doing this every two weeks. Think about it. Think of the meetings we would have. The abutters would have to come. So there was a method to our madness to have all of these, um, if you would, uh, in, 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 in bulk. If we want to split some of these up, we can entertain that. I was, um, just for me, my personal comments, I do think maybe potentially a police detail uh wouldn't be a bad thing, but then again, I don't know the cost. And Mr. McLaren has, as he stated, uh, in-house security and personnel, certified personnel, which he pays a lot of money for too, but I don't know. So I'll just pause there. Again, the public hearing is closed. Any um feedback from the board, direction from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would just submit that I'm not comfortable deciding on bands um in the, the dueling pianos right now. And I'm, I don't feel like I want to be pressured into a decision uh right now, considering the feedback that we just heard. And I want to take some time. Personally, I would prefer to take some time to assess that and hear back from the police department on their special events. Um, some of these other events he's have been, have, he's done a great job on, um, and is consistent, and I do think that this approach uh to have everything in front of us is um to his, to his merit. Um, and I like having it all here before us, and it was useful also to find out um that he has a new sound system. And I would be curious to have a demonstration of that. I would certainly attend, as I've attended in the past, and um, I would certainly like to see uh an opportunity for the residents in that neighborhood. I heard a lot of residents willing to come out and, and attend some of that if Mr. McLaren were to host it um and maybe schedule that offline if he was open to it. Um, but for me right now, I'm not prepared to approve this license. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Uh, question, Mr. Montori. We did receive the police reports from 2018 up to 2020. Was there any citations or any violations um associated with any of those calls?
I don't believe so, and the information that the board has is strictly um complaints regarding the entertainment license, so. I don't know of any uh citations that were given. Again, I'd have to talk more in depth with the police chief tomorrow.
And, and, I mean, for me, I'm comf- outside of the bands, I, I mentioned about the bands. When you can control a knob, acoustics, what have you, you can control the decibels. When you have a band, y- you know, I can see where folks start singing. So for me, I mean, I, I don't have any, a- a- any, any hotbed with these items. We have uh Kalim Police Slate. You know, he's, feel like he's almost, you know, I'll throw him in jail for what he's done in the past. I just, anyhow, but that's, but I want to, hey, that's why we have all uh separate opinions on the board. So how about um, how about Mr. Johnson? How do you feel at this point?
Um, I, I already expressed my view. I'm, I'm not comfortable approving this at this point in time. I, I think I offer similar comments as Ms. Wellman did. Um, and I'd urge Mr. McLaren to take some, some uh effort to, and I know he has, but I'd ask him to consider doing that again. Um, and um, there are neighbors that spoke tonight that are not abutters, um, but they express some concern. So I, I think an opportunity to do that would be helpful to getting us to a place that works for everyone.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. How about Ms. Tronic? We'll just go around the table, and then we'll, then I'll throw it right back to the board in its entirety.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I had expressed earlier as well, um, I think it would be useful for the abutters to hear the new um sound system that has been worked on by uh Wamisett, and I certainly think that we appreciate that. But I too am very concerned about the bands. Um, I expressed that last time when we had talked about bands and um, I'm very concerned about bands. I'm also looking at um, the comedy shows are on Friday night, and the bands were on Thursday. I know for myself, I, you know, worked during the week, so um, in Thursday nights, you know, people do have to get up, so the, I do, I am comfortable with the uh ladies' nights. I think that those have been um, been running pretty well. Also, the luau, because it's a one-night event. Um, and I, you know, I'm not sure how I feel about the movie nights, but I do think that um I could potentially um work on that as well. But I agree that um, I'm not necessarily ready to um approve this as a whole. I would be more comfortable approving um some one-offs. I know that you don't like the ones that you're choosies, and I, I appreciate the effort put into that. But I think about the ladies' nights, the luas, uh, maybe one comedy show to test that out, maybe one movie to test that out. But I am um, I can't support bands. Um, I just don't think there's a, enough outside.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Tronic. Mr. Mackey?
Clarify that if, if I have the, if I have the DJ on the same system that I have the bands, I have the same control over all of it. So it wouldn't make sense to have one and not the other because everything is controlled. And of course, we've, we, I've, I've gone through, I've done what the board has, has asked, to put it all together, to submit it to you guys. I, I got, I went under a, a supervised um trial and error two years in a row with you guys until, you know, Labor Day. We, we pulled it into a little timeframe, and then we said, okay, let's see how it goes. And then it went well. And then we got approved for the major license, and now here we are. And again, to be approved prior and then not approved doesn't make much sense where nothing has changed. The sound system hasn't changed. It's the amount of.
Mr. McLaren, I'm with, Mr. McLaren, this, uh, we're, 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 I'm letting the board members go through, um, I'm letting the board members go through here, Mr. McLaren. Just um, so it, it just, uh, Mr. Mackey, no, the, uh, no, we, uh, Mr. Mackey? Thoughts, comments?
Yes, um, again, we've, we've heard a lot of information from both sides. Uh, we obviously need to consider the residents. Uh, but we also have to consider our businesses in town and support our businesses. Um, obviously, that should not be detrimental to residents. If there's, if these were approved in the past and there were no violations, uh, I believe a violation can result in this being revoked. So if there were to be a violation, uh, I, I would say that it would be on us to address that and possibly revoke. I, I understand this contention around the bands. Um, if there is concern, um, I, I would recommend that we at least consider approving the non-ban items and maybe look at a course of action to approve those in the future. Um, but I think it would be a, a shame to not approve any of this, especially with summer rolling up and understanding the uh, the difficult year that businesses, especially small businesses, have had. Um, I think we do need to give that consideration.
Okay, and I guess final, I'll, my final comments, I'm, I'm in agreement with Mr. Mackey here. We had these, there's no violations, and I get it. If, if, if he goes above the decibels, it's, it's, that's a bad thing. Um, you know, and, and so I, we are listening to the residents. Um, I'm a little bit sometimes concerned with the bands. I wasn't aware that you can use the same systems for, for, for the bands, you know, to keep that decibel level equal when a band's singing. Um, but maybe if you have a new system, it's probably not a bad idea to get us down there. Um, and again, if three select board members go down, they would have to put it on the agenda. But it looks, it does look like we, we have a little bit of runway, June 3rd. It's, it's, here it is, is May, May 11th. We have till June 3rd for the first event, right? Is that June 3rd? So I have a feeling where the, which way the board's going, which is fine. That's why we have these meetings. So at this point, I would look for, what's the pleasure of the board? Um, and then based on the decision, you know, what we can do is through Mr. Montori and through the chair, um, is we can come up with a, with a plan of action. So I'll just pause there. I think we, we covered everything we need to cover. So at this point, what is the pleasure of the board? Again, we're not, this was a bulk, this was our request years ago to put it in bulk. Seems like we might want to rethink that in the future um based on the feedback from the board. But overall, what's the um, what's the pleasure of the board based on the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Mr. Chairman, um, I, I am going to make a motion, but before I do that, I would like to say um, I listened very carefully tonight to all the conversations, and one of the things that I did hear from uh Wamisett is that they put all these dates on there, and they do understand that the, they may not be able to um adhere to all the dates. And um, so that too gives me a little bit of pause. So I will make a motion to approve um the ladies' night for June 3rd, the luau for August 19th, the dueling piano for July 2nd, the comedy show for June 25th, and the movie night for July 7th.
Mr. Chairman, for your participation, uh, was the intent of that to do the first item on each of those that saved for bands, Ms. Tronic?
Yes, that was my intent.
I just want to be clear, we're already approved to do the movie night. We just did it, we just added it on here as a courtesy. We're already approved to do the movie nights, July 7th, the 28th, August 10th, and August 24th.
I believe, Mr. McLaren, correct.
Okay, thank you. I will, um, I will remove that. If, if it's not a part, if it's not necessary, then um I don't think that we should even be entertaining that as uh something that we should be giving him a special permit for. So I would like it if he could re- remove that.
Yeah, I don't mind if we wanted to remove the bands for now. Um, go based on the approval for everything else, remove the bands for now, go do the sound testing, bring the board of selectmen down, bring the neighbors down, and do something like that. I've got no problem with that. I can understand where the bands tick, tick, could tick some people off.
Well, okay, the, the, again, it's, the, the board's here deliberating. So, Ms. Tronic, just to recap, ladies' nights, June 3rd, luau, August 19th, dueling pianos, July 2, comedy show, June 25th.
That's correct.
And, and, and the disclaimer is no, no bands, n- no, 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 no live band, so it'll all be through amplification, decibel-controlled system.
Correct.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? I will second it. I could do that. So we have a motion. I have a second. So we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Johnson, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Tronic?
Yes.
Ms. Wellman?
No.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Chair votes aye as well, so that's confirmed um three to two. So at this point, um, any other motions to, to um, any additional motions from the board at this point?
Mr. Chairman, um, I want us to make sure that we bring this back so that there's due consideration to approve the remaining ladies' nights, dueling pianos, um, you know, comedy shows. I don't want to just leave it with just the first nights, and we should maybe um plan to schedule that in advance because I, I concur that um the ladies' nights are, are well done. Um, I'm, I'm less sure about the pianos. That's only because I haven't been down, but I'll have to make it to that one. Um, and others. So I just want to make sure that we, um, we don't leave Mr. McLaren hanging and that we can also give um, so that residents and abutters will be, will know when to, um, when to come down and, and have that plan of action. Would be my request.
Point taken, Ms. Wellman. Please, Ms. Wellman.
Um, Ms. Tronic, um, thank you um for that point, and I, the reason I did the um one is because I heard that uh, and maybe I miss her, but I heard Mr. McLaren say that he would um work with the board of selectmen and the abutters um to schedule some time to review his new sound system, and I think that that's really important. But I completely agree that we should schedule the rest of um the things, and I would ask that if the movie night is already covered, that we do not include that in the request.
Points taken, and what I'll do, what I'll do is I'll work with Mr. Montori again through the chair to set up, to work with Mr. McLaren, to get down there sooner than later. And again, will, is probably, I think all of us, we will probably make it a schedule, agenda item um for the select board. Um, then we'll reach out to residents as well, then again, to test the new sound system. But we do have some approvals here. Um, and then we can also work with Mr. McLaren for the future dates and see how we may bring those in front of the board. Um, it's, I guess it's our recommendation, based on some of the feedback, that we do bring these uh individual, but again, we don't have to cross that bridge today. We'll work with Mr. McLaren, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I just jump in and make a recommendation?
Please.
Yep.
The way the entertainment license process works, the board has 45 days to either approve or deny the application or the requests. Um, since the board has approved at least partial uh, partial application, I would recommend that the board take the remaining items under advisement to a date in the future, one of your meetings, maybe June 1st, to give yourself enough time to uh have Mr. McLaren, the abutters, the board, uh, review the sound system, get more information, and then on June 1st, uh, e- even though the public hearing has been closed, the board itself can take up the remaining items and make a final decision to approve or deny, and that will be within the 45-day period.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, so almost take a snapshot. So everything we approved, you kind of move off what I'm sharing here, and essentially just everything else would remain with the, the, the dates that we did not approve for this evening?
Into Ms. Tronic's point, um, take the movie night off. If that, and I will double check to make sure that's within the current license, but take that off.
Right, if it's on there, okay.
And I just want to make sure that, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure that that movie license is for the patio and not for the parking lot. I, I don't know if there's a distinction. I'm, I'm unclear on that. And I would also ask that for that June 1st meeting, um, given the questions of many of the board members um and Mr. Montori's, um, would be in touch with the police chief and be able to report back um to address those concerns and questions at that same time.
So yeah, the, the movie night would be for the, for the patio. It's not for the uh, for the parking lot, and I, I guess I need clarification on what we're getting approved on because uh, under the, you know, under the guideline of the, the town, you know, they've, they've asked me to put in some dates, uh, and you guys are approving ladies' night. Um, that has been approved 100% since we've opened. Uh, you guys have only approved a couple of dates, to my understanding, and this June 3rd date is a phantom date. We're not even doing ladies' night that day. We just put it in there to be able to throw dates to you guys, so it's not really doing us any, any favors by approving that. And I guess my, my point is, how do we get to a point where we approved all of this stuff in the past and I don't have any violations? Um, there's got to be some lawful right to be able to, to continue to approve with no difference, with nothing that has changed. We can separate those and approve those and, and remove some of those things, but to just go off of these one-offs, I feel like I've done my, my, my due diligence, and I've put in the time with the selectmen and the, the, the neighbors and the board and, and everything throughout the years on these specific events here, and have, and have abided by all of the rules. And to take that away from me, I don't think is very fair. Um.
Mr. McLaren, you said your piece. You, you've said your piece. It's, you said your piece. It's at the board level. Um, you've said your piece. Again, now we're deliberating at the board. This is what we do normally for this applica- for you, but for all applicants. So just, um, no, no further comments, please. Um.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Tronic?
I am, I just have one clarifying question, and I guess I would ask the town manager. But I thought that when we do approve a special permit, it is date-specific. Is that, is that, am I wrong about that?
No, you're correct. It usually is date-specific or a couple of dates in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
So we approve those of the dates, and if those dates don't work, then I'm sure Mr. McLaren will be back in front of the board, um, you know, for further approvals. So are there any other motions at this point from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, I just want to make sure that we are gonna get this on the agenda for June 1. Um, in, in the sense of kind of supporting our businesses, uh, these activities have to be planned out. People need to be swatted in. Uh, there's, there's third parties involved in this. So to ensure that we are being fair to Mr. McLaren, uh, I. ensure that we are being fair to Mr. McLaren, I would like to ensure that we are gonna have this on the for June 1. I would also ask if there's any interest in possibly extending these, maybe to that first week, through that first week of June. So there is some flexibility there. Again,
give them. They've got me to July and I think I'd be in good shape. We got to market this stuff. It's very, very important.
Mr. McLaren, Donnie, I'm asking you, I've asked, I'm asking you nicely, with the board's deliberating. So I'm asking you nicely.
Okay.
That's right. Yep. No, with the board, it's in the board's, it's in our court now. Thank you. You're good. You're, you're good.
Yeah. So I, I would ask if there's a, if the board kind of has any interest in extending this for the weeks, the first week of each of these as opposed to the first date, with the understanding that ladies night might not happen on June 3rd, but there may be an event of that first week of June, just to provide some flexibility, given the current pandemic situation to the business owner to be able to market something, schedule something, and actually have a successful event.
I'd have to defer to Mr. Montori, but to Mr. Montori's data, a date, a date's a date. You know, that's why the dates are on here. So we can actually say, you know, we need, we need, we need associated dates. So I don't think we can kind of say, you know, during the week of or during the month of. So I'm, I don't think I'm comfortable at Mr. Montori, keep me honest. I think we really have to vote on a particular date for the, for the, for, for the application.
I mean, that's consistent with what the board has done in the past. If there's a concern with timing, I mean, the board could take it under advisement until their next meeting, which is the 25th, which gives you a week before all the June events. But.
Yeah. But my, my only concern, again, having, having worked with people who coordinate events a week is a very short amount of time to plan and socialize and kind of get everything up and running and put together. So at, at that, I would, I would, well, I guess to at least think about possibly doing then that approve the, discuss the events that are in that first month of June. So let's look at, let's look at the month of June. Again, understanding, Mr. Montori, please keep me honest. If the applicant chooses not to have an event, there is no negative impact, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So if we approve ladies night on June 3rd and it doesn't happen, there is no negative impact.
Right. But if we look at this, if we just look at this, we've already hit the June 3rd. That may might have happened with COVID to Mr. McLaren's point, who knows? And then the next one is July 2nd. The next one's June 25th. So we have a little bit of runway. And then Mr. Montori is gonna verify the movie night on the patio. That's July 7th. So we have a little bit of runway. It's March 11th. So my plan is to circle back with Mr. Montori tomorrow, get another public agenda so we can listen to the sound system, invite some residents down and go from there. So I think we have a little bit of wiggle room for some of these events. I think we have the ones covered, the initial ones covered for, like I said, the first dates for all of these. And that was Ms. Tronick's vote. And our approval of three to two. So.
Just a point of clarification, those, those dates though are every Thursday in June. So then June 10th would be the follow on. So at that point, there's at least two weeks to schedule and get, get an event together.
And the plan would be get, to get Mr. McLaren back in front of us on June 1st, again, based on a field trip?
All right. I understand. Thank you.
Wouldn't we be able to have him, Mr. Chairman, on the 25th?
Um.
Isn't our next meeting the 25th?
Yeah, next meeting?
Yep.
That would work. Sure.
I would, I would say let's bring him. And it won't be as long next time, Donnie, at all. It will be a lot faster.
Okay. Okay. So any other deliberations from the board? I think we made our motion. I think it stands. And again, I'll work with Mr. Montori and Mr. McLaren. First thing tomorrow, I would like to take a site visit and then we'll go from there.
Mr. Chairman, can we have, I think the board should make a motion to take it under advisement, the remaining items under advisement until the 25th.
I was going to, yeah, so moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
My Ms. Wellman, thank you. Okay. Roll call vote. Mr. Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much, Mr. McLaren, and thank you for the board. Thank you, Mr. McLaren. We'll talk to you very, very soon.
Thanks for your time.
Okay. Next order of business. Does anyone need to take a break or can we push through?
No, can we take a five minute, three minute recess maybe, Mr. Chairman?
For you, Mr. Johnson, we'll do a five minute recess. So let's get back here at 9:20. So let's give or take. So we'll get back here at 9:20. That's a good call.
Many thanks to staff who are hanging on.
Yes.
I know there's staff that are hanging on.
And the residents who have been patient with our one line.
Yes.
Okay. We'll be back in five. And just in preparation for the DPW sidewalk presentation, Mr. Gilbert, will you be sharing?
Uh, Kevin Hoddeman will be sharing.
Okay.
And I see Todd is, Mr. Johnson is back.
Yes, thank you for that courtesy, Mr. Chairman.
No, there was, there was needed. Yeah, Mr. Mackey back.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Kevin Hoddeman. I just, Kevin, I just passed you the ball. Oh.
Excellent. Thank you. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Perfect. We have Ms. Wellman back. And how about Ms. Tronick?
I'm back. You can't see me?
Good to go? Okay.
I see you.
Perfect. All right. Perfect. All right, Mr. Hoddeman, we're good to go for the DPW sidewalk presentation.
Very, very good. I guess I'm gonna jump in here quickly. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and hello to the residents who may be watching or listening at home. My name is Brian Gilbert. I'm the director of Public Works and I'm joined by Kevin Hoddeman, the town engineer. I would like to provide an overview of our sidewalk program, what we've completed, what's in the pipeline and where we're going. I'd like to start with a broader overview of the program and then turn over the presentation to Kevin Hoddeman to present some of the more technical and project focused information. Next slide. The town has been aware of the need for safe, accessible sidewalks, particularly in areas with higher population densities and concentration of business activity for quite some time. This is expressed in the 2003 and then again in the 2016 master plans. Both plans, in both plans, there were recommendations to assess where sidewalks should go and fund their construction. In 2004, the sidewalk committee, sidewalk committee's effort identified 34 locations or, or sections with about 25 miles of sidewalk. The locations identified to the left of the, I wish that was a better representation of their plan, but their plan came out in 2004. I believe it's on the website. I'm not sure if it's there or not. Kevin might know better than I. In 2016, the master plan, sidewalks were identified as one of the top 10 issues in town. New slide. And by 2017, through the work of the Visioning Committee, the community elevated the priority for sidewalks to number two behind schools as represented in the visioning cloud and was a catalyst for the DPW's capital budget request in FY18 of $250,000, which was a general fund appropriation. Slide Kevin. In 2017, we hired an engineering firm, TEC, to assist the town in formulating a pedestrian mobility master plan, which can be found on the town's website, on the engineering page on the left sidebar. We'll provide you the, the link at the end of the program, at the end of the presentation. But the goal of the plan was to conduct a needs assessment and establish a plan that guides the town in programming and prioritizing capital improvements related to sidewalk repair, new installations, ADA curb ramps, and new improved crossings, crossing treatments that enhance connectivity and safety. In 2017, we held a public forum to gain input from our residents. We had approximately 25 to 30 people in attendance. To enhance our discussion, we were able to take information that we received from surveys that we had online prior to the forum and which we conducted during the forum. We input those and were able to present our findings real time to our audience for a more interactive discussion on goals and priorities. Next slide, Kevin. From those planning efforts, we established the following goals. Connect the fragmentation of existing sidewalks, provide access to destinations, promote recreation, and improve pedestrian safety. We found that these goals are not much different than, from the community input of the 2003 and 2016 master plan discussions. The goals may have changed, haven't changed, but the priority, the priority to town residents has. Next slide, Kevin. To achieve these goals, the plan calls for filling in gaps, installing sidewalks along major roadways, which was the number one priority of the participants of our forum. And it makes sense because to establish a base framework to build off of or from is important. You don't want to build something to those major arterials and not have something there. So you want to build the base framework and then build out. Other goals, objectives include connecting points of interest where people can walk to, locations people want to go to, and then design for safety. Next slide, Kevin. So what we came up with was 57 segments on 13 roadways and including 20 miles of sidewalk. We have so many segments because when we established the plan, we estimated our cost per segment to be about around $250,000, which was the appropriation that we had received at town meetings. So we kind of built the plan around that number. Isn't to say that we can't build two or three segments at a time, such as we're doing on Shawshin Street. But it was the only mechanism that we had at the time was the general fund appropriations. I believe Kevin has a slide later on, which will outline different funding mechanisms, especially in light of the greater use of chapter 90 and the recent approved revolving fund. One note that important note that I want to make here is there are other streets in town that are just as important as the streets we show here, especially to the residents that live on those streets. And we understand that. But we needed to put some limits around this phase of the sidewalk program. There may be other roadways that should and may be considered, given different funding, infrastructure projects that we haven't planned for just yet, and development that we don't know was coming and we can review installing sidewalks on those streets at a later date. As noted on a previous slide, work began in 2018 for the first sidewalk project under the pedestrian mobility plan, which was a stretch on Pleasant Street from the high school down to Whipple Road. I'm going to turn it over to Kevin here, but you can see the, the yellow is what we're proposing to do. The red is what is currently built. And you can see the fragmentation that you do have of the sidewalk network that exists and the need for major arterials to be, to close these, that fragmentation down, if you will, but to provide a real base framework for expanding the sidewalk into secondary arterials. Kevin?
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as Brian said, this is the map that was created out of the pedestrian mobility plan and the workshop. You can see the areas in red are the existing sidewalks. The areas in yellow are the sidewalks we look to build as, as Brian said and mentioned, you know, they're on main roads to start. So you can, we can build the framework off of that. And this map, as Brian said, can be found on the engineering division website. And this map, as Brian said, can be found on the Engineering Division website. And I'll present the website at the end of the presentation. So this slide outlines some of the design elements that we utilize during the development of a project to enhance pedestrian safety. Really, the key principle in enhancing safety is providing separation between pedestrians and vehicles. One way to do this is provide a minimum three-foot vegetated buffer. Another approach is to utilize curbing with a vertical profile to create that separation. But in order to utilize curbing, there needs to be an active drainage system in the roadway, either already existing or installed as part of the project, so you don't wind up with puddling along the curbs. ADA and AAB compliant ramps and crosswalks are also important for the sidewalk network so that we can ensure that the sidewalk can be used by all types of users. Traffic calming techniques, such as road narrowing, naturally reduces vehicle speeds, which make it safer for pedestrians, and also increasing, enhancing signage and pavement markings improves pedestrian safety. I'll note that the Police Department has undertaken a crosswalk initiative to look at crosswalk safety throughout town, and that's something that the DPW is supporting them on. So this slide provides some information on the design considerations. I know questions came up at town meeting about the type of sidewalk that we plan to install in town. You know, and these affect the project cost as well as the feasibility. As you know, there are two choices for the walking surface. Asphalt is less costly than concrete and easier to maintain, but concrete has better durability, and concrete is always used in town for ADA ramps for that purpose. There are several choices for curbing. Asphalt comes in either vertical profile or a mountable berm, also known as a Cape Cod berm, and granite curbing comes in vertical or sloped profiles. Asphalt, again, is less expensive than granite, and granite is more durable than asphalt. So granite curbing is used at ADA ramps as well as the radii where streets intersect for that durability purpose. But asphalt is used for that cost-saving on the straight runs so that we can install more sidewalk and get more out of the project. The width of the right-of-way and road obstacles is an issue that need to be considered when planning the sidewalks. Often, the older roadways in town have situations where that pavement surface is not centered within the right-of-way, so there's a lack of room on one side or the other to install those sidewalks, or oftentimes the right-of-way is just too narrow to begin with, so we can't install sidewalks within the right-of-way. There's just no room on either side. And that's a situation we ran into on Foster Road when we started to develop that project. Obstructions such as steep slopes, utility poles and stone walls have to be worked around and accounted for, and installing retaining walls to overcome the steep slopes, relocating utility poles, and also securing easements increase the project cost significantly, making it challenging to install sidewalks in certain locations. So this year, we worked with NIMCOG to develop some brochures and social media content to promote the sidewalk initiative. So this slide does show some drafts of that information that we had worked with NIMCOG to create, and you know, once we've reviewed and approved in town, we're going to push this out to social media as well as post it to the website. So the next few slides are going to go over some of the projects that we have completed. We're in the process of completing, or we have planned for the future. So this first slide is the Pleasant Street Sidewalk, which was installed in 2018. It's about 2,000 feet. It goes from the Tucksbury High School to Whipple Road. The cost was about $160,000, and that was funded through the general fund as the first appropriation in the pedestrian mobility master plan. The Shawshin Street Sidewalk, this was installed from Main Street to Mark Road, approximately 2,200 linear feet, and the project cost for this was just under $900,000. But this was part of a larger project to elevate the roadway surface of Shawshin Street to get it out of the Heathbrook floodplain, to prevent flooding of that road surface in the future. The East and Chandler intersection improvements were constructed between 2019 and 2020. Project included 2,450 feet of sidewalk. The cost was just over $900,000 and came from Chapter 90, the general fund, as well as a $400,000 Complete Streets Grant through MassDOT. The image on the right side of this slide was taken using the DPW's drone, which is a process that we use now on all of our projects. We take before, during, and after photos, and we push those out to social media as well as the website, you know, to promote the projects that we're undertaking. Currently, as of this week, we're installing bus shelters. At this location, we received a grant through MassDOT's Shared Streets Program to install two bus shelters on concrete pads which we had installed as part of the intersection improvement project in anticipation of being able to get bus shelters through some sort of grant. And those will be completed this week. The South Street Sidewalk, that's a short 300-foot stretch along South Street that we installed when we resurfaced a portion of that roadway last year. The cost of that was around $13,000 and was funded through Chapter 90 and goes from Brown Street to, towards Walgreens, just before their property, and connects with an existing sidewalk, which will then be able to carry pedestrians to Main Street. The Main-South and Salem Intersection Improvement Project, this is a project that began in 2015 with a roadway safety audit to address safety issues at South and Salem. Today, they're working on the granite curbing, which will be followed by the sidewalk construction. That project should be completed by the end of summer, early fall of this year. It's going to include the installation of 5,000 feet of sidewalk, as well as bike lanes and new traffic signals. It was funded through the Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP, with a price tag of about $3.8 million, and it's going to improve safety for pedestrians, cyclists, and motorists throughout those three intersections of South and Salem, South and Main, as well as Salem and Main. The Andover Street and River Road Intersection Improvement Project is also funded through the TIP, a price tag of about $5.4 million. It's currently under construction and includes about 1,900 feet of sidewalk in Tucksbury and approximately an equal length of sidewalk in Lowell, so that'll expand that network across the municipal boundaries. The anticipated completion of that is the beginning of next year. The Shawshin Street Sidewalk Project goes from Main Street up to approximately 1650 Shawshin Street, where there's a sidewalk that it connects to that will go all the way to East Street. It's going to create approximately 12,000 feet of sidewalk and result in a sidewalk that goes continuously from East Street all the way to Sullivan Parkway near the Bill Rickett Town Line. This project is funded through the general fund, Chapter 90, and the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. As you can see on the plan view here, there's some stormwater BMPs that need to be installed as part of this project to address the increase in impervious area that results from constructing the sidewalk. So we're able to use Stormwater Enterprise Fund to fund a portion of this construction, just the BMP portion, and also helps the town meet the requirements of the MS-4 permit, the stormwater permit through EPA that requires the town annually to install a stormwater BMP at a town-owned facility. Construction of this sidewalk is expected to start in the next few weeks. And then the town received a Housing Choice Grant for $220,000 from the state for construction of a sidewalk along the west side of Main Street from Colonial Drive to Victor Drive. This is the only section of Main Street without a sidewalk on at least one side from Old Boston Road all the way down to the Wilmington Town Line. So this is an important gap for the sidewalk network that will be able to fill, and the construction will be completed by June of 2022 for that project. Additionally, Mastot's working on a Main Street resurfacing project that's expected to begin next spring, which will go from Nelson Ave all the way down to Colonial Drive and install approximately 13,000 feet of sidewalk along Main Street with a project cost of about $5.7 million funded through the TIP. We're currently designing 2,800 feet of sidewalk up on Fisk Street and Andover Street. We're going to pursue Complete Streets funding for this project. But also, it's noted that this is put on a shortlist by Representative Moulton's office under the Transportation Committee member-designated project requests. However, funding under that program is not guaranteed at this point, but it is good to note that we have made the shortlist for qualified candidates. So some of the funding sources that we use for sidewalk construction include the general fund, Chapter 90, the Stormwater Enterprise, which is only used for the stormwater infrastructure associated with the projects, MassDOT and Federal Highway Association for the Transportation Improvement Program, MassDOT Complete Streets Grants, Housing Choice Grants, and then the Revolving Fund that was recently approved at town meeting. I will note that the MassDOT Complete Streets Grant Program has just changed as of March. Normally, you could apply for an additional grant as soon as you closed out the grant award that you were working on. They changed this to be a, basically, they put a four-year moratorium on the community, and you have to wait four years until you can apply for another grant. So because we received a grant in 2019, we can't apply for the Complete Streets Grant until FY23 at this point. But we will do that. As soon as we're eligible, we'll be submitting a grant application for Complete Streets. So some of the things we've done to date, as we've discussed, we've completed four sidewalk construction projects towards our Pedestrian Mobility Master Plan. Approximately 7,000 feet of sidewalk has been included in those projects. We've got about 6,900 feet of sidewalks that are currently being installed, and construction will begin shortly on another 12,000 feet of sidewalk on Shawshin Street with another 3,800 feet under design. And when you put the MassDOT project in, which has another 13,000 feet of sidewalk along Main Street, between 2018 and 2022, we'll put approximately 8.1 miles of sidewalk in Tucksbury through various DPW and Mastot projects. So it's a significant amount of sidewalk to add to the network as well as upgrade where those sidewalks are in disrepair. So some of the goals that we achieved over the last few years with the Pedestrian Mobility Master Plan was installing sidewalks on the main roadways, which, as Mr. Gilbert says, was the priority of the public that came to the workshop to give their input on locations where they wanted to see sidewalks. And we've also undertaken another major roadway project, Shawshin Street, which will start this summer. You know, we've utilized construction for new sidewalks, which was, when the public was asked if they'd rather see new sidewalks in new locations or rehabilitate the existing sidewalks, you know, approximately 90% of those respondents said that they wanted to see new sidewalks to expand the network. But we've utilized the funding not only to construct new sidewalks, but also fix the ones that we have in locations where it's needed. We received two grants to expand the funding for sidewalk construction, the Housing Choice Grant and the Complete Streets Grant, not to mention the smaller grant that we received for shared streets for the bus shelters along those sidewalks. And then, you know, we've addressed or addressing the locations that were discussed at the sidewalk workshop, which include Pleasant Street, Main Street, East, Shawshin, Chandler, and Fisk. Those six roads, when the residents at the workshop were asked to write down, you know, an open response question, you know, the three locations that they would like to see sidewalks installed in, these were the ones that came up at all of the tables. You know, so this, clearly, the there's a need and a desire to have sidewalks in these locations, so we've set those as priorities, you know, to align with the desires of the community. So this here is the website where you can get to the Pedestrian Mobility Master Plan on the on the DPW Engineering Division page. We'll be posting this presentation tomorrow, and if the board has any questions or if Mr. Gilbert wants to add anything that I may have missed or glossed over, we'd be happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Awesome job. This is positive stuff. This is, I love this stuff. This is incredible for the community, so I want to jump in, but I'll pass it to my board members first. How about, how about Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Hoddeman and Mr. Gilbert, and we appreciate your patience this evening while we work through some other items. This is a very important topic, as you referenced, and it's near and dear to the residents of the community, so I think the more you can put information like this out, the better off we all are, and it reinforces for our community the commitment that's being made to address this concern that they've raised. So I applaud you for it. I'd actually go a step further than putting this document on the website. I'd encourage you to record it like you just presented it and get it out on our TV station or our social media or something, because adding the color that you bring to it and explaining, I think, goes exponentially further in reinforcing the positivity that Mr. Kelly referenced. I do have a question. It may be more for the town manager because it deals with the finances, and I want to thank you, Mr. Hoddeman, for summarizing all the resources and certainly emphasizing the financial commitment that we've made through grants and TIP funds and other sources, general fund as well, and town meeting support. The one thing that my memory might be hazy, but the one thing that I think is missing or might be missing from the financial piece and Mr. Montori can hopefully clarify, but my recollection is that our partners at the Planning Board also have some funds that they accrue for sidewalks. And I'm just curious if there's collaboration, I guess, between this effort on the master plan and those resources. I don't know how significant they are. I'm curious if there's a way to capture that and potentially work in collaboration with the Planning Board. They obviously control the dispensation of those funds, and I'm not trying to usurp that, but where there's a potential source of funding in collaboration with this plan, that might be something else to add to this equation. So I'd ask Mr. Montori to maybe speak to that, or if Mr. Hoddeman, you have some color. I'd welcome that, and then I have one other question, but go ahead.
I'll just jump in quickly. The Planning Board does have a sidewalk fund that they they control, and we've had discussions with them in the past, and we'll continue to have discussions on the best use of those funds to achieve our goals. There's definitely cooperation on their part. It's just because we've had funding from the town, grants that we've accessed, that's allowed us to address the goals of the Pedestrian Mobility Master Plan. We really haven't had a need to go to the Planning Board yet, but I know that we've had discussions in the past, and they are open to to assisting. I think they may have some areas they would like to target, and we'll have those discussions with them in the future.
Yeah, and I appreciate the way you're addressing it in the context of collaboration. It seems to me it might be an opportunity to accelerate some of the sidewalk installation, or maybe, to your point, fill in some blanks that they have interest in as well. So all good stuff. Again, not trying to get in anyone else's business, but important a resource that we can expand the net here. So my other question, gentlemen, is the the streets that were identified, if I remember, there were thirteen, and you've gone to work on some of them already, like Shawshin Street, for example. And you're talking about, like, taking bites at 250,000 per increment, if you will. Can you just put some color around how you're prioritizing these thirteen? Can you just put some color around how you're prioritizing these thirteen streets? Like Shawshene is up to be done now. You're, you're doing something. I've heard discussion of Whipple Road, for example. But how, how are you picking or identifying, you know, one road over another as the next in line? Just give residents an idea behind that.
Todd, that's, Mr. Johnson, that's a great question. You know, because, because like you said, we've got fifty-seven segments on thirteen roads and, you know, where, where do you go next? So one of the things I, that we look at is the funding. You know, the Complete Streets Program was a great resource and unfortunately they, they changed the program a couple of months ago. Because we're, we're hoping to use that type of funding for a project like Fisk Street. Where it, it checks many of the boxes that are required for Complete Streets. You've got a school there, you've got a church, you've got the LRTA bus route on Andover Street, you've got fifty-five plus housing. Just over the border within a quarter mile, which is the requirement under Complete Streets, you know, of, of the project. So. You know, that, that's why we undertake a project like Fifth Street because it, it positions us for that Complete Streets funding. When it, when it becomes available to us. You know, projects like Whipple Road, well, we, we completed a project on Pleasant Street to get pedestrians down to Whipple Road. And now we're undertaking the next piece, you know, to get them down even further and, and. You know, create those loops that we can on our major roadways. You know, because we know we have some sidewalk on Chandler Street that we look at. So if we come down Pleasant Street, then we go Whipple and we can connect to Chandler, things like that. So. You know, there, there's a lot of different things that we look at and I'm sure Brian can talk more to it if there's anything I've missed. You know, but we, we, we kind of look at the, not just the segments themselves, but how they're going to piece together as a network over time. You know, and try to find the, the most advantageous locations. I will say Foster Road is on this list. We looked at Foster Road because there were just a couple of short segments that we could create a sidewalk that would go all the way to Shawshene Street. To Chandler Street, which both connect out to Main Street. But we found out that the right of way for Shawshene Street was undetermined. It was either thirty-three feet or thirty-three feet. Town Council couldn't, you know, couldn't ascertain what the actual right of way with was. So that presented a challenge. So that one, you know, we have to table for now. So oftentimes it's, it's not that we set something as a priority. It's that the challenges that that sidewalk presents pushes it to the bottom of the list as well. So it kind of works both ways.
Understood. And that's an excellent explanation and I, I appreciate that. I think I get questioned often by people saying, you know, why this road and not that road? Or how come this part of town and the focus is on, you know, not on this part of town? So. If there's a level of strategy or accessing resources, your description of Fisk Street is exceptional in the sense of. All the combination of factors allows us to tap into financial resources that we might not otherwise be able to reach into is, is a strong. Argument to, you know, what's going on and why, right? So I appreciate that color. And again, I think. That that's the kind of information I suspect residents are interested in. I'll just end with this observation. I'm sorry, Brian, one, one last comment.
Just wanted to add a little bit to that. We're not just managing for one infrastructure, one piece of the infrastructure. We're. Looking at water pipe, drainage, and we're trying to piece those together too. So Whipple Road, we recognize is a major thoroughfare in town. It has a shelf life. There's been quite a bit of digging going on out there, as I'm sure you know. And we're trying to plan for being able to put these different elements in so that we can re. Reconstruct the road. So sometimes it's not just looking at the sidewalk and how that's going to fit, but it's also looking at other projects that we have. So that it's a coordinated kind of effort over time.
Yeah, great point. And certainly probably more efficient from a cost perspective when you take that point of view. So thank you for that. Just last observation, I'll turn it back to the chairman. The map, the colored map. Puts it all in perspective, I think, for residents, right? At thirty thousand feet or from a drone level, if you will. You know, you can see kind of the rhyme and reason behind what's going on, right? And, and there's logic to it. As opposed to, well, how come we approved a sidewalk at town meeting for this road and there's no context to it? Again, I think the more that this can get out to the public. And, and be available and accessible, and I'm sure it is already and, and can be again. But this kind of encapsulates, you know, there's a method to the madness here and. And I appreciate the effort and, and the summation of what you presented tonight. So thank you for doing that, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Good stuff, good stuff. How about Ms. Tronick?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for being so thorough, Mr. Johnson. Really hit a lot of great points, so I appreciate that. I also appreciate Mr. Hardeman's. I thought that we used the dot board to pick where they go. I'm just kidding. But I do get those questions as well, so that was helpful. I am curious. In terms of the cost of asphalt, concrete and granite, just, you know, one to one dollars is. And I'm just making this up is, is asphalt, is it two times concrete twice as expensive, granite three times as expensive? What is, because it was pointed out that having to replace it, you know? So I'm curious about that.
So for the walking surface, asphalt is typically twice as expensive, excuse me, concrete is twice as expensive as asphalt. You know, so you can put in twice as much asphalt sidewalk as you can concrete for the same. Funding. And when you look at granite versus asphalt berm, again, you've got, you know, probably a, a two to one ratio there as well. You know, so when you combine it, you've got granite curbing with concrete sidewalk is kind of the Cadillac. And then your asphalt sidewalk with the asphalt berm, you know, is the more practical and. You know. I, I don't want to say cheaper solution because it's not, it's definitely still a durable material. But that, that really leads to why we use the granite on, on corner radiuses and things like that and use the asphalt on straight runs. You know, because plow damage obviously is a, a major concern when you're talking about curbing. So if you use the, the asphalt on straight runs, the likelihood of plow damage is reduced. When you've got your, your corners, you want to protect those a little better. So we use the granite there.
And your ADA, if you, I heard you correctly, you're also using it for your ramps and things like that. So they have a longer shelf life. And then I just want to hit on the point. Of your comment about the use of stormwater funds. I really appreciated that point. People are asking, what are we doing with that funding source? And to be able to use that fund that hits multiple buckets very much as a resident, I appreciate that because. I, you know. Dual purpose. And then my last. Comment is I think that you were pretty modest about your grant application that was shortlisted. I believe that there were a hundred and fifty proposals that were put forward and seventeen were selected. And out of that seventeen, I would say the majority of them were larger urban settings. So. For a town to be able to get in that mix, I'm not sure what went behind that, but. I got my fingers and my toes crossed that that comes through and I just. Eight to twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two, eighteen point one miles. Is that what you said?
Eight, eight point one.
Oh, eight point one. Okay.
I'd love eighteen point one.
Okay, well, so we're not, but I'll, I'm going to be happy with eight point one because we've been. Doing a lot of work on that. So thank you all for that work.
Good stuff. How about, how about Ms. Wellman?
Thank you very much. I concur with my colleagues' comments in the interest of time. And I know it's been a late night for Mr. Gilbert and Mr. Hardeman. I appreciate all of your efforts. I wanted to say I really love the three-foot vegetative buffer and. The understanding that that buffer is there in places where it can be with the asphalt curbing, I think has a better sense of safety. Than right up against the road where it's possible. So I think that that's a, that's a great safety item in your design. I'm, I'm very excited about all of your projects and I just want to say I appreciate the approach that you've taken over the years, gentlemen. With your staff, beginning with public outreach, robust public outreach. A while back and I went to those forums that you held and, and participated there with a, with a really great turnout. And then you've, you've very professionally developed a strategy and come up with a tactical plan to approach all of. The items and I, I'm very glad that you explained how you, you choose these sections. I am very content with, with your decision-making. And how you're deciding which, which portions to develop as you go. And, and I'm very impressed with how you are patchworking. Grants in Chapter ninety, General Fund and all the other funds that we, we have available to make this work for the community. It's the number one thing we hear about. Other than schools and, and you're really making just some fantastic progress. I wanted to follow up on one question. Or one point that Mr. Johnson raised earlier, and that was regarding the fee in lieu of account that is in the. Under the ability of the Planning Board to appropriate. My question is. When was, what kind of appropriations have been made out of that account? So, or to, or, or have, or have not any been made recently?
Yeah, we don't, I don't think any have been made recently.
And, and the Planning Board is the only board that can make that appropriation at this time. Okay, thank you very much. I don't, I don't wish to, as Mr. Johnson said, it's not. It's not, and I'm not interested in stepping into other territory. I'm just curious about that, that piece of funding. Once again, gentlemen, thank you very much.
How about Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hardeman, Mr. Gilbert, my colleagues have been very thorough in their questions, comments and kudos. This is, this is great work. It's clearly a priority. And I do want to reiterate Ms. Tronick's kudos on the clarification for stormwater. Again. After sidewalks, that's, that's almost the, one of the next most common questions is what, what is this being used for? Where does it go, et cetera? So thank you for that clarification. This presentation is awesome. I'm a big fan. I'm glad that it's going to be posted on the website and that the link was included. My one question is, has any thought been given to doing a plan of action and milestone type outline? For kind of what are we looking at when? Notes such as how do we plan on funding it or where would we like to fund it from? Just to kind of have a, a, a solid picture that outlines everything. And Mr. Gilbert, related to hear you say that we're considering things such as drainage and water and sewer. So understanding that whole picture of, well, we can't do this street because it requires sewer or water or whatever additional requirements there are. Has any thought been given to kind of a plan of action, milestone, outline all of that?
I'll take a stab first and if I forget something, Kevin, jump in. But the five-year plan for the most part is our guiding document. We typically put. Design a year before we want to construct. In some instances such as Whipple Road, Shawshene, some of the others, we have designed the entire. Roadway and then we break that if we have to, depending upon funding, break that up into sections. So. We're good to go if we can find additional funding or we stick with the plan to go phase one, phase two, phase three, if we, if we have to do that. So it's somewhat. It, it's, it's not concrete. Because so many things change in this business. So. It would be nice to have, you know, a project outline, project schedule. But once, once we do go into construction, there are project schedules that the contract gives us that they have to abide by and things of that sort.
Absolutely. Yeah, the, the kind of genesis of the question was, again, we've got fifty-seven segments on thirteen roads, kind of being able to see. Well, this is planned. We're looking at doing, entering the planning phase for this in two years. We have concerns about water here. Just kind of a, a, a one pager, if you will, that outlines all that. I think it would be very beneficial.
All right, very good. I don't have much to add, just all positive stuff. Sometimes the, no good deed goes unpunished. I know you guys do a lot of work when you're looking to plan the. The new sidewalks about water runoff. I know we had some situations there, but you guys are very quickly to react in those situations. And I just want to say the intersection of Sultan Salem is still a mess because it's under construction, but it's already better. And safer than it has been in the last fifty years. So what a great project there and, and up by River Road as well. Two great projects paid for by the state. And it's going to bring, you know, those are real dangerous sections of, of, of other ends of the town and. So super work there and, and that's really all that I had. And just let's pay, pay. Pay attention to infrastructure bills. We keep on hearing about infrastructure, infrastructure at the fed level, at the state level. And like I said, you guys are so good at those. Grants, but I think hopefully more money's coming our way and then you might get your wish. We could be at nineteen miles or twenty-seven miles as opposed to the age. So. Let's just be wary of that. And I know you guys are very wary of potential monies coming down. And I would like to give a little shout out to Mark Kratman. He did a lot of work with those bus shelters there. So. I do want to recognize him for that work. That's great getting those in there as well. So that's, that's really all I had. I mean, all positive stuff. So. Mr. Montori, anything to add on your end?
The only thing I'd like to add, Mr. Chairman, really quick is in the future, if money, if funding does become available from other sources. You know, we would go above that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that, you know, we have plugged into the capital budget. We did that in previous years. You know, we want to try to limit use of Chapter ninety money, try to keep that towards our roadway program. And, and steer other funds towards sidewalks. So even though we, we on average appropriate two hundred and fifty thousand, that doesn't mean. In the fall or next year, we wouldn't appropriate more. So we're always looking at, you know, pushing this, this plan. Along faster and further. So just want to end with that.
Great stuff. Again, thank you guys so much. Great stuff and keep up the great work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good night, Ken.
Okay, just moving along here. I do believe, well, this is perfect timing. I think maybe a resident or two wanted to speak on behalf of that, but I think this is the resident section. So. Brian, who do we have on the line?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have Chris Mullins on the line and Chris, you're on.
Hey, everybody.
Just address Chris.
I just had a comment and a question. Comment, this map is fantastic. I'd love to see it updated. It does look like the Pleasant Street to Whipple section. And the Chandler and East section are, are still in yellow, which I think is still yet to be built. Hugely important, but just, just worth, now we get this guy going online. And then my question is, Mr. Gilbert had mentioned that part of the plan was installing. pedestrian infrastructure around major corridors, but the first, or maybe it was the second slide after the title slide had, I think it was. Proposed and potential. With some of the major roadways, major collectors pounced in between the two. So I was wondering if we could get a definition on what a. Versus a potential. Project actually is sidebar project, rather.
Mr. Montori, did you catch that? I didn't quite catch it.
Yeah, I think I did. I'd have to check with Brian and Kevin in the morning and I can get back to Mr. Mullins. And I can let the board know too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. The other, Brian and Kevin jumped off. I apologize for that. But Mr. Montori will follow up on you, Chris. Okay. Montori will follow up. Are you, Chris? Okay. Awesome. Thank you very much, Chris. Thank you. All right, Brian, any other callers?
Uh, no other callers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so let's do this. I know there's a little bit of a lag. So, for caller jumps on here in the next 30 seconds or so, we'll entertain the call. But why don't we move to new business? I think we can move this, through this relatively quickly. So, Mr. Montori, as far as new business here, the notice of activity and land use for Sutton Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The notice of activity and land use, land limitations is something that was brought forward to us by EPA and DEP. This has to do with the Sutton Brook landfill. EPA has boilerplate language that they would like to have the town approve. It's a document that outlines the limitations of use of the Superfund site. And it requires that the town, by signing this document, will notify both DEP and EPA of any type of activities that we do undertake on the Sutton Brook landfill and seek that approval from EPA and DEP prior to undertaking any activity. The document has been reviewed by Town Council. They're putting the final wording together for the town to approve. The document does allow some very limited use of the Sutton Brook landfill, one being solar, solar panels, which we already have had installed. It allows for general maintenance of the landfill, the landfill cap. But really, anything else beyond that, the document requires that the town seek approval from EPA and DEP. They'd like to move this forward sooner than later. And what we're seeking tonight, after discussions with Town Council, is that the board vote to author, would vote to authorize me to sign a notice of activity and land use document with EPA and DEP.
Do we have anything scheduled or planned or a roadmap ahead to do activities up there that you're aware of?
No, we, we, we went out to, we had an RFP years back to find someone to put solar panels on the landfill. They have done that. They're working through the final interconnection of that facility. So, there really isn't any other use for the land.
Okay, questions from the board, board members?
Mr. Chairman, just quickly through you to Mr. Montori. This, this whole area, Sutton Brook, was an anchor around the town's neck for quite some time. And we've made enormous progress in terms of limiting the town's exposure, coming up with, you know, I guess, a long-term workable solution. And we've made some headway in terms of reducing the expense through, you know, refinancing and things of that nature along the way. So, very positive. So, my only question here is, are we giving something up that wasn't contemplated when we negotiated as a PRP and came to resolution? What, why is this happening now at this juncture as opposed to when we agreed, you know, a number of years ago to what we felt was a good deal? And I continue to believe was a good deal for Tewksbury?
That's, that's a good question. I think it was, it just simply was something that was discussed previously between EPA, DEP, and the PRPs that would, would happen. I think like anything else in government, especially when you're dealing with both EPA and DEP, it took a long time. We had a changeover in people, the, the point person from EPA, who was originally handling the Sutton Brook landfill closure. So, I'm sure that delayed this. I, I think because it is a standard document on all Superfund sites, there's really no surprise here. It was just getting the document brought forward to the community to, to sign as a landowner.
Okay. So, and you're comfortable that we're not handcuffing ourselves to something that could hurt us in terms of the overall?
No, because we, we, if we do, if there is something out that we want to do, we can, we're not, we can still ask for permission. And it would just be a matter of working through any issues that EPA and DEP would have. But just knowing the history of the site, knowing what other landfills in other communities have done, putting the solar arrays on, they're really, they're really the only thing we could do.
Understood. Yep. Okay. It just, it strikes me as odd that after all these years, this is popping up as opposed to typically the EPA would say that this is critical at the outset, right? We're, we're going to drive the process. So, it just strikes me as being kind of backwards in terms of the order. But that's fine. I, I'm, I'm satisfied with those answers. And I appreciate the homework that you've done with Town Council on it to date. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other comments or questions from the board?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say to Mr. Johnson's comment, nothing surprises me with the Sutton Brook project and the backwardness of the, the process, given what we went through in the beginning of this. So, I, those comments were well warranted. But I'm, if we believe that there is no risk for us, and we basically have already maximized that site, I would like to make a, unless anyone else has any other comments, I would make a motion, because I think you need a motion. Is that correct, Mr. Montori?
That is correct.
Does anyone else have any comments?
Only, I was going to make a motion. That was it.
Okay.
No, you were making the motion. So, I'll second your motion. Second.
Okay, I'll just make, yeah, make the motion to sign as recommended by the town manager for Sutton Brook.
It's just, it's just, the motion is to authorize me to sign that.
The notice of activity. Yep.
Yep.
All right, I have a motion, a second by Ms. Wellman. Mr. Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronik?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Next item of business is local housing partnership consultant to address affordable housing. Ms. Tronik, this one is, you put this on the agenda? So, want to explain for this item of new business?
Yep. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have alluded in our, our board member reports over the last several months that the local housing has been looking at the work that we do to try to improve the efficiency. As you know, the veterans' housing is coming online, and we're pretty excited about that project. But we do believe that we would benefit by use of some of the housing trust fund money to go into, through the town manager, obviously, but put out an RFP for a consultant to address the affordable housing in Tewksbury, to find ways to maximize the work that we're doing. And I wanted this to be on the agenda because I think it's important that people know that this is something that the board is thinking of. I know that the chairman of the local housing partnership is meeting with the town manager and Steve Sadwick to discuss this. And then the group itself is meeting on Monday, May 19th. So, I just kind of want to make sure that people are aware that we are looking at this and that we are trying to reinvent or retool, as we have been saying in our meetings, that committee to be more effective within the town and hopefully bring more affordable housing properties to the residents.
Yeah, we, we did something. Okay, makes total sense. We did something very similar for the reuse committee, for a consultant to help us with those two parcels. But Mr. Montori, keep, keep the board honest here. Is this something that would have to go to town meeting to get approvals?
So, that was going to be my?
Goodness.
I was just going to say, so I was going to ask Mr. Montori to just explain the process so residents are aware of what we're asking for.
Perfect. So, once the scope and decision is made by the housing partnership that this is something they would like to move forward with, they would request that the board of selectmen fund the consultant through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which does not need any town meeting approval. It just simply needs the board of selectmen to approve the expenditure.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but that is an appropriate use of those fundings to, for that money.
Yeah, we believe it is.
And I just want residents to know that we have looked at utilizing NIMCOG and other resources. So, this was not our go-to. This was where we have landed. So, you know, I think when the board meets on May 19th, there'll be continued discussion, depending on what the town manager, the assistant town manager, and the chair have to bring to the group. But I just want to make sure that people know that we're working hard on that project.
Very good. How about, any questions from the board? I'll just go down. Mr. Johnson?
Uh, no question, just to comment. I think based on what was just detailed about approval and responsible use of the funds, it's really incumbent that the scope of the ask be clearly defined so that we can make an informed decision. Clearly, there's a need, and clearly, there's support, you know, in, in the general context. But bringing a consultant in requires, I think, clarity of what we're asking that firm or that person to actually do and what the accountability is. So, I would just urge, I know, Mrs. Tronik, you're on the committee. I'd urge you to take that message back and encourage those who are forming that scope of work to stay focused on that. And that will help us to get to yes.
Agreed. And I think that the town manager and Steve Sadwick, who obviously has great expertise in this area, are going to help us to define what that scope is.
Thank you.
Very cool. How about Ms. Wellman?
Um, thank you. In addition to Mr. Johnson's scope commentary, which I totally agree with, and is a good call out, I also, I would like to have a little bit more background on the, the local housing partnership, sort of where it started, what the intentions were from that, from that committee. I don't think we need a consultant to look into that. And then kind of an understanding of where it fits with our housing authority. So, those two organizations kind of work in, play in some of the same pools. And so, I'd like to have a, a more clarity around what those two organizations do differently.
Yes. And our housing authority is a member of that committee and is a very active member, I might add. So, Melissa is an active member. But I'm happy to bring back more information for you all.
Yeah, I think that would be really great. And that would be, that seemed to fit into a future goal of retooling that committee. And I appreciate you bringing this forward. Thank you.
Yep.
How about, Mr. Mackey?
Uh, no, I'm just going to echo the comments of clearly defined scope and deliverables. So, if we're going to be spending money, let's, let's have it clearly defined on who, what, when, where, why now.
Agreed.
I have no further comments. This is just on the agenda to plant the seed and looking forward to the local housing partnership coming back in front of the board in the very near future. So, thank you very much, Ms. Tronik, for representing the board.
Sure. Thank you for your support.
All right. Next order of business is NIMCOG. I just heard NIMCOG mentioned. Is that Ms. Wellman?
No, I can, no, I'll do this quickly. Um, okay. Just, just briefly, NIMCOG is submitting an application for an economic development district designation. They're submitting the application to the Economic Development Administration. They're looking to designate the lower, greater lower region as, as a new designation known as the Northern Middlesex Economic Development District. It will help us all qualify in the region for future grants, as well as provide NIMCOG within this application, a three-year planning contract to support economic development. The application is seeking, or NIMCOG is seeking letters of support for the application. And I think in your packet, there is a sample letter that they would like the board to approve and authorize the chair to sign and send to NIMCOG to add to their application. So, if the board was comfortable, and I would recommend that they vote to approve the letter of support and authorize the chair to sign it.
Um, just a few questions maybe from the board, but I'll just jump in quick. Ms. Wellman, would this kind of like still be in your, when you go to represent us in the NIMCOG meetings, would this now be officially potentially a part of that, those meetings in the, for the future?
Yeah, kind of. This comes out of the work that was done just before COVID. If you remember, there were some economic development forums in the region. We had one at the library. And so, this is coming off this previous work. It, you know, some of its, there's no opportunity here to do this. And so, this will benefit the community. It'll come up at NIMCOG from time to time. But there's, it's directly reported to the manager and the assistant manager. So, it's good stuff.
All right, very good. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation that the board direct you to sign the letter and, and indicate the date of this meeting on the letter and return it back to NIMCOG.
That's not very appropriate.
Yeah, there were.
Okay, very good. And I have a second from Ms. Tronik. Roll call vote, Mr. Johnson?
Uh, wholeheartedly aye.
All right, good. Okay, Ms. Tronik?
Enthusiastically aye.
I was going to say, wow, nice. Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. All right, very good. All right. The, the next order of business is election term limits and elected salaries. And Ms. Tronik, this is your agenda item. So, I'm going to pass it right back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It occurs to me that we live in an interesting time of some natural, some national unrest. And lately, it's hard for me to turn on the news without hearing about the voting process. What's good, what's bad, what needs to change, it goes on. And amidst the controversy, what I hear on both sides is it's about voter participation. And I think that people have a very different view about what that means to individuals. However, at the end of the day, I think everyone can agree that we need more participation in our government. And it's no different right here in our own community. Over the last few weeks, I've engaged with many residents regarding election terms. The conversations always ended with a great question. How do we get more people involved? I don't have the answers, but I know I want to hear more. I sit here as someone who represents the people who elected me, which is why I asked this item to be added to the agenda. I know that I want to learn more about what the others are thinking. Is it the length of the term? Is it the compensation? Is it the time and effort to do the work? What's the secret sauce? How do we improve? I want to know what the residents are thinking. I want a shout out to my selectmen, Mackey, for working with the town manager to implement a new town email for the board of selectmen. And through you, Mr. Chairman, I request that the town manager provide hyperlinks in our names on the website, on our board of selectmen website, so that with a click of a control key, residents can communicate with us directly. I'm inviting residents to share their thoughts with me about all of the elected terms. I'm also requesting through you, Mr. Chairman, that the town manager provide the board with any regulations which require specific terms for any of our elected positions. I'm looking forward to hearing from the residents. And my new email address is astronik@tewksbury-ma.gov. And with regards to the elected officials' compensation, I would like to suggest that the board review the salaries of all of the elected positions. I would like to suggest that the board review the salaries of all of the elected positions. If my memory is correct, the last time the board addressed this issue was when the financial task force chaired by Jay Kelly, not our chairman.
The Jay Kelly.
The Jay Kelly. And we proposed a 10% cut to the Board of Selectmen's compensation and removed all of the health insurance benefit for all elected officials. And that goes back, I think, all the way to 2008. At that time, the town was not in a position to increase compensation. But I think the times have changed and I believe it warrants our review. And lastly, I just want to take the opportunity to thank everyone who has given me the time to engage with me in this important discussion. I look forward to hearing more and I am hoping that the conversation continues within our community. And that's all I would have to say, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stronach. I'll open up to the board for questions, comments. Mr. Johnson?
I have nothing to add at this time, Mr. Chairman.
How about Ms. Wellman?
I have nothing to add. I, I thank Selectmen Stronach for bringing these ideas.
Okay, Mr. Mackey?
I look forward to continuing the conversation and I think that term limits and salary are two things that should in fact be looked at. Thank you.
Very good. And I have no other comment, but I think it was a good call on town meeting as far as elected salaries. I think every elected official should get the same amount across the board and whether, and, and the chairman should get nothing in addition. So I do have some thoughts around the salary portion because it was a good call. Sometimes you don't realize, you're like, wait a minute, you know, we're all elected officials and no job is more important than the next. So that was a pretty good call at a town meeting there. So it'd be interesting to, to see how we can look at that and, and, and make the necessary changes. So all, all the boards, elected officials are equal and fair across the board. There's, there's no one board better than another board, in my opinion. So, all right, if there's no other comments, we're going to move to the, Mr. Montori, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of quick things. Two Town Council invoices for the board to approve. The first is from March 16th through March 31st in the amount of $3,740 and I would recommend the board approve.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Wellman, second, second by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well.
And then there's a second invoice from April 1st through April, April 15th in the amount of $5,270. I would recommend approval.
I'll offer a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. In a second. Ms. Wellman, roll call vote, Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Stand.
Chair votes aye as well. Okay, thank you. That's four. Okay, very good. That's four, one abstain. Anything else, Mr. Montori, on, for the town manager section?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we have no minutes to report. How about let's move to board member reports. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, in, in light of the late hour and the busy agenda we had, I will refrain from any comments and offer a report tonight. So thank you for the courtesy, but I'll take you up next time.
Very good. How about Ms. Stronach?
So I just want to say that tomorrow is National School Nurses Day. And I want to thank all of our school nurses who have been crushing it during COVID in the schools. And last week was Teacher Appreciation Day, so I wanted to shout out to that. May 13th, the Tewksbury Elementary Building Committee is meeting. And I think I told you about May 19th with the local housing. And May 20th, I believe the Events Committee is meeting to bring the Fall Festival. So that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Good stuff. How about Ms. Wellman?
Really briefly, in light of the time, I wanted to say that the beautification cleanup day was a smashing success. We thank many businesses along Main Street who used their digital finds to help us promote the day. We had, I think nearly 200 volunteers or 200 bags of trash were dumped. It was an all-day thing. And people were so happy about the electronics recycling and the paper shredding. So I hope that beautification committee will bring that back. So tremendous success. And it was great to work with my colleague, Mr. Mackey, who came down to the DPW and did yeoman's work, yeoman's work. It was great. Got his hands dirty. It was fantastic. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is that the Bylaw Committee is meeting on Thursday night. We will be continuing our work on Title II. For those of you who haven't read the bylaws recently, Title II is the section that governs town meeting. Warrants that get applied to articles, how they get applied to the warrant and all that kind of good stuff. So we will be discussing that. We do have a public comment portion of our meeting. So if you want to join, call us. And we will be working through, through our work on the Bylaw Committee, we will be doing public outreach as well through the form of a survey. And we're developing our survey questions as we work through the titles. So we're always open to contributions and conversations on this work. And once again, that'll begin at six o'clock on Thursday. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wellman. How about Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the interest of brevity and time, I will defer to our next meeting.
All right, very good. I just want to thank you guys. You know, I had the, I came down with the COVID there, so I couldn't make town meeting. A special town meeting could kill me, but you guys did a great job. I thought the residents did a good, a great job. So I, I did miss you guys, but at least want to let the residents know I had a pretty good excuse. That's all. So with that, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Final roll call vote tonight. Mr. Johnson, how do you vote?
Finally, aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much. Good night all.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.